Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to our January 4th, 2012 meeting of the City Council. And first and foremost, we wish you all a very happy, healthy New Year. Know it's going to be a great one, especially for downtown and all of the city of Las Vegas. So, Happy New Year, and off we go. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2, and are closed captioned for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, some of the customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box can view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The City Council meeting, as well as other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. These proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web on the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler system if alarms should activate during today's meeting. Please evacuate using the exits. Once outside, assemble on the Las Vegas Boulevard side of the property. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation in public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available also online, in the city clerk's office, or at the front of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Cindy DeLong, Religious Science, and please remain standing for the pledge?
I'm going to fill in there.
Okay. Councilman Steve Ross, if you will proceed, please.
I'll fill in there, thank you. Our kind and gracious Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be assembled as a council this day to discuss the issues confronting us as a city. Father, we're grateful for the many blessings that Thou has poured out upon us. We're grateful for Thy guidance. We're grateful for the health and strength of this city. We're grateful for the residents who contribute so much to the things that are of value to them and their families. Father, we ask at this time that you be with us, that you watch over us this day, that you soften our hearts and our minds through the whisperings of Thy counsel, that we may do Thy will and perform as a mayor and council in Your eyes. Father, we ask for these things in Thy Son's holy name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we will now proceed with the ceremonial portion of the morning. We look smaller.
We lost weight.
Oh, wonderful. I've got a goal ahead of me. Yes, we are healthy. Wonderful. As I mentioned, this is the ceremonial portion of the agenda, and for our first item, Councilman Wolfson is going to recognize the January Citizen of the Month. Our wonderful Councilman Wolfson.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Good morning, everybody. Each month, one of my colleagues or myself are able to select a Citizen of the Month, and it is my honor and privilege today to select the first Citizen of the Month for the year 2012. It's my honor and privilege to name Jack Ford as our City of Las Vegas Citizen of the Month. And if you look at Jack, everybody look around, he's shocked. So, Jack, I'd like you, I'd like you to come up to the front with me, please. Normally, this auditorium is filled with a few hundred people, but it's our first meeting after the first of the year. Our agenda's a little short, so normally you get a much bigger round of applause. So, one more time, our Citizen of the Month, stand next to me, Jack. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Jack. We have so many great and active community leaders out in Ward 2. It wasn't an easy decision, but when somebody mentioned you, I didn't think twice, Jack, as you and I have worked together on a number of things. This man has done so much to help so many people for so long. I just want to share some of the things that Jack has accomplished. Let's start with his military service. Jack initially enlisted in what was the then Army Air Force at the age of 15 years, but was discovered as an underage and was sent home. When he was 17, he joined the U.S. Navy as a chief petty officer, the highest rank possible for enlisted personnel. Jack retired after 20 years, 8 months, and 10 days. His primary function in the Navy was as an air-traffic controller. After retiring from the military, Jack became a driver's license examiner for the State of California, where you again retired after another 20-year career. As a retirement gift to himself, he took a trip around the world. Jack lived in Hawaii for a few years and returned to the mainland when your mother became ill. You then eventually moved to Las Vegas in 1998 and almost immediately began impacting our community and benefiting our residents. He convinced his wife to move out here from Ohio and marry him about 10 years ago, and Gloria, who's in the audience, and Jack live in the Lakes community, and really don't define retirement like most of us. Most of us, when we retire, we sit in our backyards or sip a beverage, but after two careers in 40 years, you're still going as ever strong. I'd like you to take a look at some of the pictures we have on the monitor while I tell you a little bit more about Jack. And Jack, this is a total surprise to you, right? So, if you'd like to look at the monitor, you can see some of the pictures. We're showing all people in southern Nevada right now. Jack has been a church deacon, explorer, Boy Scout troop leader, is a published poet, donates blood on a regular basis, has taken flying lessons, tap dancing lessons, sailing lessons, and he readily admits that he really doesn't know how to retire. There are so many other things that Jack's involved with. He's active with several veterans organizations. Jack is instrumental in moving the annual Memorial Day ceremony from its prior Lake Mead location to the Lake Sahara location, and this event requires the coordination of many community leaders, military organizations, junior ROTC units, community residents, musicians, veterans, and active military personnel, and Jack does it all. Jack's favorite project is his involvement with the Nevada Boys State Program, which takes high school juniors to the Nevada State University at Reno for a week-long intensive educational immersion in governmental structure and processes. Jack's involvement in bringing the American Legion riders to Las Vegas and the Spinoza Bears to seriously ill children are just a few more examples of what Jack Ford does to make a difference in our community. So, at this time, I'd like to invite your wife Gloria up here. Come on, please. And one thing, if I might add, is when my staff asked Gloria to give us just a few little background facts and tidbits, we've got three pages. So, I just read just a few of the highlights because Jack has done so much more. So, Gloria, thank you for providing us with the information. Jack, it's my pleasure, thank you, Councilman, to present you with the first 2012 Citizen of the Month certificate on behalf of Mayor Goodman and all of my colleagues up here on the council, and to, number one, thank you for all you do. You and I have worked on the Lakes Memorial Day celebration seven years in a row, and you do so much more. So, I'd like first to ask Gloria to just maybe say a few words and then hand it over to Jack. Could you do that, Gloria? Just a few?
Where to start? Actually, now you know why he's never home. But he's a busy person, and he doesn't know how to retire. If there's something that needs to be done, people call Jack, and he can usually get them to the right person, or does it himself. He's helped so many people so many ways. I'm very proud of him.
Wait till I get her home. Wait till I get her home. She's in deep trouble. I really, yeah, it's a total surprise, Steve, and I want to thank you and the members of the council. It's a great honor, and you're right, I'm surprised and overwhelmed.
I just need one promise, though, Jack. This isn't the end of your community service. This is just the beginning. Is that right?
Well, I plan on doing it as long as I can, you know. I'm 81, and I'm starting to run out of a little bit of steam, but...
Well, you're entitled to slow down a little, Jack, but we really need you out there in Ward 2. So, congratulations, and thank you so much again. Okay? Oh, and there's one other thing. Jack, as the recipient, turn around this way so everybody at home can see you, of the Citizen of the Month for January 2012, we're going to display this very expensive, very large sign that sits right outside of City Hall, and it's going to be up there for the entire month of January for everybody to appreciate. Okay? So, congratulations.
Congratulations, and seeing that you kissed twice, it's like Prince William and Kate. Two kisses are good.
Yes.
We saw that. Good luck, good health, and congratulations. Well, this is a very exciting time, especially not only for our community and our city and our state, but personally, it's a very exciting time for me. And I have the honor today to recognize a special young man and his classmates, his senior classmates, who are here from the Meadows School. But everything, as we all know, before we honor any young person, it starts with the parents. And I would like Rick and Jennifer to be acknowledged first, and we will call you up here. Rick is part of Chief Myers, City Fire Department, and we are so proud because we know the genes are really good, the work ethic, the moral ethic, the brains, everything starts with the parents. And being there and working for our wonderful Chief Myers and the City Fire Department, first of all, I want to acknowledge Jennifer, if you would just stand up, and Rick, please, goss, because, and they have brought the entire family with them. So, we're very, very proud of you. Thank you. Thank you. And today, this is about celebrating a young man who has been at the Meadows School since second grade, which meant when he was a very young man, close to the age of his brother, who is Sean in first grade at the Meadows School. Sean, do you want to stand up so everybody can see you, too? And Garrett went to the Meadows School, starting in second, where he was taking all the basic subjects, but immersion, Spanish as well, and music, and science, and computer, and history, and English, and math, and I probably forgot some things. He is also part of a wonderful family that has triplet girls. So, I would like you three to stand up and be acknowledged. This is Bailey Cassidy and Delaney, who are freshmen there, and we are so proud, Mom and Dad, boy. Wonderful. And here, you're taking care of our city at the same time. Garrett, thank you very much. Garrett has been named the Wendy's Student Heisman High School Athlete, Male Athlete of the Year. This year, one out of over 48,000 student applicants. So, this is quite an accomplishment. This particular award recognizes men, young men and women, who excel in learning and performing, leading in the classroom, on the field, and in the community. Like the Heisman Memorial Trophy, the Wendy's program believes in the pursuit of athletic and academic excellence with integrity. Garrett is well-deserving of this award, of course, and has been an excellent example of his classmates and young people around the country. He has played football, basketball, and baseball at the Meadows School, has lettered in each sport every year for four years. As quarterback on the football team, Garrett threw 7,458 career yards, 92 touchdown passes, and he wasn't playing against girls. I mean, he was really playing against other guys. And he averaged 22.3 points per game in basketball, the all-time leading scorer in that sport in Meadows history. On the baseball diamond, Garrett has an imposing position. He has been the pitcher, and set a single-game strikeout record of 18 strikeouts in that game. Now, this pales in comparison to the student that he is. He has an extraordinary 4.72 grade-point average. And I will tell you, that is not four-point, thank you very much, 4.72 of easy courses. This is tough, tough academics. He has achieved, and this will show it, he has achieved a perfect score of 800 on the math portion of the SAT, and a perfect 36 on the math portion and science portion on the ACT. And as you can see from those joining us in the audience, Garrett didn't accomplish this only by himself. As I mentioned, certainly Mom and Dad are the key to it all, and so devoted to their children, and what good parents exemplify, so that he could grow up to be an individual himself, follow dreams he had, but have the support and the focus at home, not only by Mom and Dad, but by his siblings. His philosophy of leadership is summed up in a quote of his own, "Leaders need to take a little less share of their glory and a little more share of the responsibility." And I love that. Garrett, I want to commend you, and I want you to come on up here, please, first, and I want to also, while he's coming up here, this stellar, phenomenal young man, he is so articulate, he could probably entertain you all because he's handled so much of the emceeing at programs at school. Garrett comes from a school, our headmaster, head of school is here, Mr. Henry Shannon, if you would, there he is, there, and our head of our upper school, David Lamb, please, our head athletic, Department of our Athletics, Frank DeSantis, who has been here with us for years, I can't remember. Gary Hannig, who is his football coach, couldn't make it today. I guess he's slaving over the other students. And we have members of the senior class with us, whom we're going to bring up in a minute. And so, today, I want to commend you for your accomplishments and everything that you've done, and present you with a proclamation, making today Garrett Goss Day in Las Vegas. And this reads, "By virtue of the authority given to me by the laws of the state in Nevada and by the charter of the city of Las Vegas, I, Carolyn Goodman, Mayor of the city, do hereby proclaim January 4th Garrett Goss Day in the city, and ask all citizens to recognize him for his accomplishments, both in the classroom and on the field, lettering four years in three sports, football, basketball, baseball, while maintaining a grade-point average of 4.72. We congratulate him on being named the 2011 Wendy's High School Heisman Male Athlete of the Year in the United States." And you're going to get to speak in a minute. That's not all we have. We have a key. And it's in a little box. It's a very big key, and of course, coming as the follow-up to my husband, he would always say that the key opens one of the slot machines in town, but he wouldn't tell you which one. So, you keep trying, and then your folks won't have to work so hard anymore. A key to the city. And I think what I would like to do, if I might ask Mr. Shannon first, before we give you the microphone, to come up here and just say a few words about this wonderful young man.
This young man's future is so bright, he needs sunglasses, and I'm surprised he's able to stand here without them. Garrett exemplifies everything that's wonderful about the Meadows School, and he has brought such credit and such honor to our institution that we can't thank him enough, and thank his family enough for choosing the Meadows for their children. And Garrett would be the first one to say that, you know, he's done what he's done in the classroom with the help of our very fine faculty, and he's done what he's done on the playing field in team sports because of the other athletes who've been on the teams with him. But he stands head and shoulders today, above the crowd, and is very well-deserving of this honor. Thank you so much, Mayor, for doing this.
Thank you. Garrett, a few words? I know you can handle a microphone, seeing you've done it many, many times.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman, and thank you, council. I'd like to thank everyone. I thank the Meadows School for all the opportunities they offer to all their students. I thank my family for always supporting me, and then I thank all the administration of the school and all my teammates. I couldn't have done anything without you guys. So, thank you, everyone. It's a great honor. Thank you.
Thanks, Garrett. Wait one second, if you would. Chief Myers, could I have you come up just for a few words? I want to spill some beans here about his dad. Oh, would you like to introduce everybody that's come with you beyond the family of your students, seniors?
They're the senior football players, and first we have Max Newman, Tori Mays, Max Newman, Tori Mays, Richard Lee, Kenny Brown, Taylor Back, Stephen Gibson, Anthony Gord, and Jacob Jimmerson.
We're going to get a picture. We'll get a picture. But many years ago, I think before you were chief, I think his dad came out to do, we had a fire drill at the school, and that was the beginning of your enrollment, but I'm not sure. So, tell us just a little bit, something, something dirty about his father, just so we can muddy this up a little bit.
Well, I wish that was easy. The problem is, Garrett, your father is a very special person to us in the fire department. And I think, Mayor, you said it best early, that the parents are the leaders in this and set the tone for the student, and I think your father and your mother does that. I've known Rick and the family for many, many years. He is an exceptional leader with our fire department as a company officer. Rick, we're very proud of you for what you do, and obviously, taking care of your children to this level, and it's been impactful for the city. So, thank you, Rick, and your family. It's been wonderful. And Garrett, you should be very proud of yourself and also your family. So, congratulations.
Thank you, chief. And if you could just wait a few minutes so we can get a picture afterwards, I think you're very much part of the family. So, Mom, Dad, would you care to come up just for a few minutes? This is a once-in-a-lifetime, remember, 48,000-plus applicants from around the world, around this country, and here are the two that began it all. It's wonderful. Do we start with Mom?
Well, yes, this was a great honor for Garrett, and we enjoyed the weekend in New York, and we're all very proud of him, and it's been a lifelong trip for him. He's been working hard since very, very young, and we've been very proud of him, and we love you.
I think Jennifer said it pretty much. Mayor Goodman did mention that I did go to the Meadows School for a fire drill, and that's where I did find the Meadows School. And people ask me about the Meadows School, you know, how is it? And I say, it's a perfect fit for certain people, and for Garrett and his classmates, it is the perfect fit. I mean, they have the academics, and they have the athletics, and Garrett's done extremely well there, as well as the rest of his students, and I think all the students there have a bright future ahead of them. And I also would like to go one step further. Council Wolfman, it's a much better atmosphere today than I saw you two weeks ago at the senior citizens, where he had me singing karaoke while we were serving dinner to 150 senior citizens.
You did very well.
Thank you. No, I didn't.
I'm sure you were an athlete, but didn't know you had such a great voice.
No.
How did he pick?
I didn't say anything about a great voice. He just did a good job on a karaoke machine.
Well, anyway, we congratulate you all, and what we'd love to do, if Nancy Byrne back there, can we get a picture over against the wall? And if Chief Myers, there, you were right there. Can we do that quickly? And we'll take a five-minute recess, because I think that's the end of the morning ceremonial portion, just for some quick pictures. And I'd love City Council, all members, please, to go off for the first picture, if you would, with Garrett, please. So, we'll do it over there to the left of the monitor. Congratulations. We are so proud.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
I'm sure what you did, but...
That's what I strive for.
I'm glad Jason's here.
I'm sure what you did, but...
That's what I strive for.
I'm glad Jason's here.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Happy New Year.
Congratulations.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
He went to the lower school when he did, or he went to all the schools when he first did.
Isabel, I said we do anything for Metro.
Yes.
I wonder if we'll have you on.
What's up, Anthony?
Hey, it's a white tie.
Are you all on the bus?
I appreciate it. I had you at the wrong number.
Okay, we will reconvene now, and starting with item, agenda item number seven, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda. Public comment must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We will set the time at one minute. Please come forward and state your name.
My name's Anthony Hockley, 123, so David, I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and that when I start watching all the ballgames over the holidays, you know what I mean, and all the parades and the bands and whatever, and, you know, the tournament parades or whatever, it makes you realize how great our country is. We've got such a great nation. And I just want to say I'm glad to be here, and I want to harass you, so have a good day.
Thank you very much. We wish you a Happy New Year, and we're going to hold you to the fact that you're not going to harass us throughout the day. So, anyone else wishing to be heard? Hearing none, we will move on to item number eight. For possible action, any items from this morning's session that the council staff or the applicant wished to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony?
I have nothing.
Councilman Anthony?
I have nothing.
Thank you very much. With that in mind, we will move on to item number nine. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the special city council meeting of December 12, 2011, and the regular city council meeting of December 21, 2011, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you, Council. And now we will move on to the consent agenda. Item number 10. Items 10 through 17 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be acted upon in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman Barlow?
Yes, item number 14.
Item number 14. Council, anyone else? I would entertain a motion that we vote on items 10 through 17 minus item 14 for approval at this point. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make one correction. Item number 16 on the consent agenda has a correction. This item is both in Ward 3 and Ward 5. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 10 through 17 except for item 14.
And with your correction.
Correct.
And with the correction. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to item 14. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mr. Arnt.
This is, let me just read it if I may, the homeless, this is regarding a possible action to approve $100,000 in redevelopment special funds for acquisition of a single-family residence located at 5324 Isadora Court and transfer title to low-income household as affordable housing.
Yes, the question that I have is, how do we come about this property? Just a little bit of backdrop, because I didn't quite, after the briefing yesterday, and I read through the background, the backup documentation, I'm slightly confused now as far as how we acquired or basically came into a position of ownership of this property.
Sure. Councilman, for the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This was a client in a program that we've since discontinued, our Single Family Housing Rehabilitation Program, where we actually assisted clients that are in substandard housing. A lot of them are elderly, they are on fixed income, and so typically what we do is we go into the household, work with the client to do repairs to his or her home. We've done some single-family homes, we've done some mobile homes as well. Often these homes are some of the oldest homes in the valley. So we were working with this client, Ms. Darlene Trammell, back in 2008, and worked with her for a period of about a year and a half, and got stuck. We weren't able to finish the repairs to the home. There was difference of opinion as far as the quality of the work and completeness of the work, and so we entered into discussions with Ms. Trammell for a workout solution because she was in substandard housing. We wanted to try to assist her. So we offered two options. One, to relocate her for a period of time to finish the work. A second option, to find substitute housing, and Ms. Trammell elected the second option. So following that, we went out and we looked for a replacement home for Ms. Trammell. We have a pretty experienced team, I must say, within Neighborhood Development Division because of a different program, our NSP program, where we go out and buy homes that are on the market that are vacant, most of them have been bank-owned or REO. This specific home on Isadora did not happen to be owned by the bank, but it was up for short sale, so we thought it was a home that could be on the market for a while and vacant, that could have a blighting, could be a blighting factor on the neighborhood. So we thought this would be a good solution for Ms. Trammell, and as well, we'd be taking a vacant home off the market and occupying it with a tenant. We are going to keep a reversionary interest in the property, so once Ms. Trammell's no longer living in the property, title would revert back to the city, and then the home would be in our asset pool, just like our other Neighborhood Stabilization Program, NSP Homes, where we could either resell it or offer it for rental housing to a low-income family or household.
Okay, so the applicant chose the second option, which was basically moving to this Isadora location. Is the applicant paying rent here?
The applicant's on fixed income, she's elderly, she has a disability. At her current home, which again is substandard and in disrepair, at the Rulon Earl Mobile Home Park, she's not able to pay rent and actually received assistance to acquire that home in Rulon Earl, so all she's able to afford is utilities and insurance. So she's not going to be paying us rent based on her income level. She will be covering utilities, insurance, she'll be responsible for maintaining the home, and then again, this will be in our pool. We did make sure we were wise stewards with the city's money. We're actually buying the home under appraised value. Of course, we're buying it at the bottom of the market, so long-term, we think this is a good investment for the city. It'll be in our asset pool, and we could eventually either resell it or offer it for assistance for a low-income family or household.
Okay, and I also see in the backup here where there's a 50-year term agreement. What is the basis for the 50-year?
Well, the 50-year, it's meant to be a home for Ms. Trammell to live in indefinitely. Again, she is elderly, she is on a fixed income, so we don't know how long she's going to be in the home, but when she would cease living in the home or pass away, again, that 50-year window is ample enough time to cover us as the city for actually getting title back. Basically, what would happen is we have a quick lane deed that's signed, so we would record that at the county recorder's office, take title back to the property, and then we'd have the home back in our inventory.
Okay, I appreciate that background information. With that, I will move to follow status recommendation for approval of this item subject to all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. 14 is passed. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 18. Report for possible action on the 2012 federal legislative agenda. This is all wards. Mr. Olivas? Good morning. Happy New Year.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman and Council. For the record, Ted Olivas, Director of Administrative Services. I'm joined today by LeAnn Lee, who's our legislative officer. Today, I'm here to provide you a brief overview of our 2012 federal legislative agenda. You should each have a copy of the agenda up there, hopefully so. Inside that document, in the sleeve to the left, there should be a copy of this PowerPoint, if you're interested. As you know, the agenda is a result of discussions that started back in October with each of you, as well as the city manager's office and each of the departments. Since that time, we've been working with Vicky Cram, our lobbyist in Washington, and each of the departments to put together this agenda for your consideration. First off, a special thanks to LeAnn and Vicky for their efforts in putting this thing together. It is no small task. This is a compilation of information that affects each of the departments, so we have topics in here that relate to very specific departments. We have experts in each of the departments that help us put this plan together. The structure is similar to the federal plans from previous years, however, it doesn't include any appropriations requests. As we briefed you, Congress is no longer taking appropriation requests, so there's no sense adding that this year. So that's a little bit different than previous years. This year, however, we provided some additional information about our city because there are some new members in Congress that are representatives of Nevada, so we wanted to help educate both them and their staff members on who we are, what we do, why we do it, and those kind of things. The first four sections that you see in here are enhanced from previous years. The remaining sections are similar to our, the plans that we've put together in previous years. As you know, this is the document that Vicky uses to lobby on our behalf on a day-to-day basis back in Washington, and it's also the guide used by our federal delegates and their staff to refer to on our positions on various federal topics. In addition, you probably know that we work very closely with the National League of Cities and the U.S. Conference of Mayors on these same topics, so these are things that you see throughout the year. It's not just something that you're seeing today. Section 1 provides some background history, a short history of our city, talks about the current council, some interesting city facts, and various maps showing the city's ward boundaries, the city as it compares to the entire Las Vegas Valley, and the city wards versus the congressional districts. So you each have maps in that section that show each of your wards versus those districts. Section 2, we provide an overview of the city manager's office, and we're providing a copy of the city's report card from last year. We want them to know how we're performing, how we've rated ourselves, how the citizens think we're doing. Section 3, we highlight the city's mission and vision and things like that that we've been talking about recently that they may not know about. They, we want them to know that we are planning strategically and we're trying to do the right things for our citizens, engaging the citizens, and if you'll notice, we have our action superhero up here included in the PowerPoint. In section 4, we provide an overview of the new city hall. It includes information about the funding, the economic stimulus and job creation that that's done for us, its environmentally friendly design, and a little bit about our deal with Section 5 highlights the city's position on transportation. This comes from our Public Works Department. It includes our commitment to working with our delegates back in Washington and the federal government to support policies aimed at reducing the cost of transportation, reducing vehicle miles traveled, increase safety and creating reductions in greenhouse emissions and those transportation-related topics. It also provides our recommendation and our support for a long-term surface transportation reauthorization to help us fund major projects. What Congress has done is they've done these short-term approvals of money for transportation. The problem is, is it's difficult to do any long-term planning when you're only getting money in little, in little bits, in little, so we're asking that they do a long-term reauthorization so that we can appropriately plan, get these projects started, and get people back to work. Section 6 describes the impacts that foreclosures have had on the city. This was a new section that we put in last year. We wanted to highlight that. It includes our commitment to the foreclosure acquisitions, our prevention efforts, and our recommendations and considerations. In section 7, we highlight our job creation and economic development efforts, including our economic development strategy, our RDA strategy and programs, and we provide recommendations and considerations for that as well. Section 8, this highlights our sustainability and energy initiatives, including our energy strategy, sustainability policies, and community partnership. And if you're wondering, yes, that is Mr. Perrigo on the electric bike. He's here with us today. Section 9, this provides an overview of how we've used our IRA funds. There was a number of departments involved in this, including Administrative Services, Economic and Urban Development, Public Works, and Cultural Affairs. This section provides a table with the breakdowns of the programs, award amounts, and expenditures. We wanted them to have the details on all the money that we received and how we're doing it, spending it. What happens with some jurisdictions is they get federal money and they don't spend it. You've got to spend... is they get federal money and they don't spend it. You've got to spend the money. Well, this is ground zero. This is where we can spend those funds, and we want to show them that we're doing exactly that. Section 10 is our public lands agenda. It states our position on various public lands policy positions, such as our support of legislation to amend the existing disposal boundary of the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act, the development of an urban national monument to protect paleontological resources and provide economic development benefit. That's our Ice Age Park. It's up in Ward Six that we've been talking about for a number of years. The use of public-private partnerships on federal land acquired by the city through various provisions, and our concern of the land deeded to the Nevada Cancer Institute, who are now in bankruptcy. That, of course, is the land that's on Alta Walupai in Ward Two. The city attorney's office is evaluating our options on that land acquisition. And finally, we have our legislative priority section. This is kind of an A to Z catch-all section that talks about a number of federal topics, such as community development block grants, that's CDBG, fire, homeland security, Yucca Mountain, things that we talk about throughout the year. As you know, the departments provide you updates on many of the topics in this document. What this does is it consolidates all of that into a report that Vicki can use and our federal delegates and their staffs can use, so they know where we stand on federal topics.
Mayor, just real quick, Ted, if you'd just go back real quick. D-block, what was D-block?
D-block relates to, I'm not the expert at this, but it relates to the, I'm not sure how to describe it. Let me...
Let me try. LeAnn Lee, Administrative Services. It came from our fire department, and it has to do with emergency response systems. I think when there's a disaster, everyone floods the system with phone calls and text messages, and I think that they're looking for some capability to broaden that spectrum, to allow multiple users to use the system without flooding it. If that's not correct...
Is that what D-block legislation is?
It's called...
That's correct. That's correct. In this, it relates to public safety. This is, we're in support of this with the National Association of Counties and National League of Cities, U.S. Conference of Mayors. They want to reallocate a portion of this spectrum, which is used for communications, particularly in an emergency situation. And what they don't want to do is they don't want to sell this capability to private industry, because if private industry gets it, then the emergency management functions are limited because it's owned by private industry. They want to keep that set aside for emergency management purposes.
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Karen Coin, if I may, to you and the councilman. I believe the D stands for data. It provides for the opportunity for data transmissions over those lines, and Ted's captured the use and the intent here perfectly.
Okay, thank you. Ted, you could have put data.
Well, (laugh) D is for something. Moving forward, we now have a new congressional representative in Congressional District Two. Congressman Mark Amadee was elected to replace Congressman Dean Heller, who was appointed to serve in former Senator John Ensign's place. A number of these representatives are people that served in the legislature, so Councilman Coffin, then Senator Coffin has served with a number of these people, and it's good to have that relationship with some of those folks. So I think that's very helpful to the city. We're in the process of scheduling meetings with our Nevada delegates and their staff, at which time we'll present this agenda to them. The mayor and I are scheduled to go back to DC in a few weeks, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? Boy, you've done a good job. Thank you, LeAnn, and Happy New Year. And beautiful job. I'd like to have some extra copies up in the mayor's office.
Absolutely.
If I could, please.
Thank you.
Really nice. Thank you. Do we need a motion to accept the report? Thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept the report.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Ted. That was grand. Item number 19, a report for possible action regarding a parking asset management plan for the city of Las Vegas, including the structure of the parking division under the Department of Economic and Urban Development, and supporting municipal code changes and other changes. This is in regard to all wards. Mr. Arndt.
Thank you. Good morning. Bill Arndt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. It's my pleasure to introduce at the dais Ms. Brandy Stanley, who is our Parking Services Manager. And Ms. Stanley has been working very diligently and closely with a number of departments, and I want to just thank them briefly. Our Detention and Enforcement Department, under the leadership of Michelle Freeman, our Field Operations Department, under the leadership of Larry Hogsness, and our Finance Department, under the leadership of Candace Falter. This asset management plan before you today is just that. It's a plan or a strategy on how to reorganize our parking system, and it is a system, into a single business unit to more effectively manage our parking assets and deliver services for our customers. So with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Stanley, and she'll go over the plan.
Welcome, and I'd like you to know on the TV news this morning, you were called the Parking Czar. So I just want you to know it's getting out there in the world, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
You may announce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm very happy to be here after seven short months.
And you'll have to restate your name, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Brandy Stanley, Parking Services Manager for the city of Las Vegas, and I'm very happy to be here after seven short months and a lot of hard work on the part of the departments that own pieces of the parking system. We think we've come together with a very good plan to move forward with the parking system. So I'll start by talking about what our current market looks like. In order to put together a plan, we had to figure out what the market looks like. As you know, back in September, we actually physically counted, physically counted every single parking space in the downtown area. That amounted to 47,500 parking spaces that are in the downtown area. Public parking inventory is almost 20,000. And what I mean by public inventory, it's available to the general public, not necessarily owned by the city, but parking that is available to anyone that wants to come and use it. The city, however, only controls 4,200 spaces, which is only 9% of that 47,500 parking spaces. So relatively speaking, we're a small player in the market. The average downtown monthly parking rate is about $66 a month, and the average hourly parking rate is about $2.30 an hour. Those are very low rates for a city this size, and a lot of it has to do with the fact that we have so much inventory. This is, basically what this shows is the area that we inventoried every single parking space in. This includes structured parking, strip mall parking, any parking space other than single-family residential.
Mayor?
Please, Councilman Barlow.
Yes, I want to see the slide here. How are we defining the boundary for downtown? And I saw you had had up the slide prior, but what are the boundaries that we consider to be downtown?
The boundary for what we counted, you can see virtually on the map. It's not the same as the Centennial Plan. It's not the same as the redevelopment agent. What we did was we chose the spaces. We chose the area of downtown that is most heavily used in terms of parking. So if you look at the statistics on the next slide, what I did was I put together some of the use in that area, and it's approximate, because it doesn't exactly match any of the other boundaries. What is relevant for the parking system is where the parking is that is used the most, rather than where downtown or redevelopment district boundaries are.
So did you look at the medical district at all, as far as the UMC corridor?
We did not look at the medical district at this point. We focused just on the downtown area to the east of the railroad, with the exception of what's directly on the Symphony Park and down by the mall. So that is something that we can expand as we move forward.
So as you look at this, and correct me if I'm wrong, you don't consider anything west of the railroad track to be downtown?
That's not, no, that's not the case. The core downtown and really where a lot of the parking issues are, in terms of paid parking, in terms of, in some cases, relative scarcity of parking, was the area that we chose. So we know that downtown does extend past some of those borders, but wanted to focus on the places where parking is predominantly paid and where parking can be a shortage sometimes.
And I would add to that, this is not a stabilized, one-shot deal. You are going to continue to assess, and as the town changes and downtown grows and moves, obviously, to the west at this point, and metered parking or assessed parking, that will be part of your continued investigation.
Absolutely. One of the things that we wanted to do in the plan was to set up an infrastructure that allowed us to maintain this data with accurate information and to expand it as we needed. That is a very difficult thing to do in this industry, so we are, you know, what I wanted to do is to make sure that we devoted the resources to make sure that it kept accurate and gave us the infrastructure to be able to expand the area of study.
Please, Councilwoman.
I'm understanding, I think what Councilman Barlow is pointing out, we use the term downtown, and we include Scott Jades and all the way past there, and now we use the word downtown as to a core. Maybe we need a semantics type of thing there. But in any case, soon, I think, we would have to move into looking at parking spaces along Charleston and that medical center, because there's a great impingement there on the residents, the people who live there, because anytime we bring in anything medical, they start taking more and more parking places, and then they're going down the residential streets, and then they're driving more traffic there. So if there's a way you can just put that on the top of your list for the next thing to do, I do think it's an important area. All the way up to Valley View, that whole corridor.
Okay.
Turning Medical.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I know that hospital districts surrounded by residential areas can be somewhat problematic for a number of reasons, so I certainly understand and be more than happy to include that.
Thank you.
So what we did in the general area of the downtown core is to figure out what that 47,000 spaces supports. As you can see, it's about four and a half million square feet of office, 3.6 million square feet of retail and entertainment, industrial, casino, hotel rooms, residential, as well as the World Market Center. So we know how many parking spaces we have. We know what it supports, but what we needed to do is to put that information together to figure out whether or not it was enough. So if you look at the chart on the bottom, for each one of these use types, there are standard, industry, occupancy rates and use types that you would need to develop for each one of these uses. As it turns out, when you separate out nighttime and daytime demand, we're about 38% oversupplied on parking. So in other words, our peak demand on nights and weekends is not quite 30,000 parking spaces, and we have almost 50. So this has some actual positive development implications because a developer could, depending on where they go, come downtown and actually forego the cost of developing a significant number of parking spaces by using some of the additional inventory that already exists. So given the fact that we have enough parking, what we wanted to do was to put together a management strategy that concentrated on the ease of use. We need to make it easier for people to pay. We need to make it easier for people to find spaces, and we need to make sure that our parking policies and our enforcements and our presence downtown actually corresponds with the demand and where it is. So we came up with a number of goals. One is we want to extend excellent customer service across the system, from people that are trying to pay us, from people that are trying to dispute a parking ticket, from people that are trying to purchase permits from us, from people that are dealing with enforcement on the street. We want to make parking easy to use. We want easily accessible parking. We need to answer the questions, where is it? How do I get there? What is it going to cost, and how do I pay? Those questions are not very well answered at this point, and we need to work on that. We also want to improve the financial performance of the parking system so that it removes some of the burden from the general fund. We want to support our existing businesses by making sure that we have parking solutions and parking options tailored for each one of the group's needs, and that's typically customers, employees, and residents. We want to make sure that our policies support those business needs. We want to make sure that our policies support new development. So we need to take care of what's already there, as well as accommodate what's coming in. And because parking is never static and demands always change, and sometimes change drastically overnight, we want to make sure that our organization is flexible and able to meet changing demands. So how do we get there? First, we need to establish a parking office. As Mr. Arndt alluded to at the beginning, we want to establish a one-system, one-stop-shop type of location. We want a central base of operations. We're still looking at a couple of locations. We want a one-stop shop, one phone number, one department to deal with, and we want to make sure that all of our on- and off-street assets are being dealt with from a single point of leadership. So instead of a personnel org chart, this is more of a functional org chart. So you see at the top, Economic and Urban Development, and then we're going to take on administration of the parking system, which includes citations, back office, accounting, customer service. We want to deal with on-street, which is parking enforcement, setting the rates, hours, and time zones, maintaining the meters, and also incorporate our off-street operations, which are off-street parking facilities, by maintaining them, providing them for event parking, and making sure that we're properly managing the access and revenue control.
Question, if I might. Where does private business fit in here, so that perhaps the city will be communicating with private business and in cases of need, where we can share facilities or something? Is there any body that handles private garages, whatever? I mean, I'm thinking the World Market Center is one. How does that figure into your organizational chart?
This particular chart is only our internal structure. So the employees that are responsible for each one of these areas would also follow as well. But a core value of the parking system needs to be communication with and coordination with on an ongoing basis with private property owners. Unfortunately, the ownership and management is all over the board, so it requires one-on-one contact with a very large number of property owners and managers. So that's something that we want to do as we move forward and continue to work and coordinate our assets with their assets. But like I said, this particular one is just a functional chart of what we are going to do with our own assets and our own organization.
But that is a consideration.
Absolutely.
So that on a first Friday, they would open up their private parking for free or whatever. That dialogue is ongoing.
Absolutely. And one of the things, as an ongoing initiative, we want to do is continue to upgrade our mapping and our space location technology, and that's going to have to involve involvement from the private owners so that they can communicate to us what their rates are, when they're open, when they're not open, so we can push that out to the general public.
Mayor?
Please, Councilman.
I see the diagram that you have here is the proposal of what you're looking to do as far as to collapse and consolidate all of the services under one umbrella. Give me a depiction or give us a depiction of what it currently looks like, because I know earlier in your conversation, you mentioned that a number of departments own a piece of the parking system. Explain that.
There are five different departments that do different things within the parking system. For citations, for issuing citations, the D and E enforcement folks will do that. For processing payments, hearings, and appeals, that is done by the finance folks in conjunction with the D and E, because a lot of times when there's an appeal, there needs to be an information exchange. Accounting, auditing, and permits is also a combination of finance and D and E. There's someone within D and E that actually issues the permits for employee payroll deduction, various types of permits. And then payment is then processed by the finance department, and in the case of payroll deduction, by the HR department as well. Parking enforcement, obviously, is the boots on the streets are with D and E. The meter maintenance and collections are with detention and enforcement. That staff is, but the money is then transported to finance to be deposited. Rates, hours, and time zones are currently the responsibility of the traffic engineer, who is given authority to set those rates, hours, and time zones. So there's a lot of communication that needs to be done to make sure that, you know, those things are being done properly. Facility maintenance, which is our parking, our off-street parking facilities, the garages, that's currently being done under streets and sanitation. Event parking is not being addressed at this point, and access and revenue control is also not being addressed because we don't have any gate-arm systems or any restricted access facilities that we directly manage.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the reason why I ask that, because it now helps me realize that the consolidation... And the reason why I ask that, because it now helps me realize that the consolidation and the collapsing of the uses from the various five departments makes sense as far as what you're laying out before us here today, so.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. I'm glad you asked that question. So, in order to move forward with the consolidation of all the functions, what we are proposing to do is to transfer all the enterprise-funded employees to the economic and urban development department. So in other words, the employees that handle the things that I was explaining on the previous slide are all already paid for by the enterprise fund, by the parking enterprise fund. The idea is to take all those employees and actually transfer them to the same department under the same point of leadership. That involves 16 people from detention and enforcement, four people from finance, and one person from streets and sanitation. We'd also like to fill existing and funded vacancies. There's two customer service vacancies. There are three full-time parking enforcement officer vacancies. We are proposing to fill one full-time and break the other two full-time into part-time positions so we can have more flexibility with event parking evenings and weekends. So then we've broken out our project list into three phases. The first phase is more administrative, with a target completion of July 2012. We want to make sure that we physically move everyone into the same location and start building a culture of customer service and establish the points of leadership and how we work. We want to make sure the public is informed of where we are, who we are, and how to get hold of us. We want to make sure that we assimilate all those various functions that I was explaining earlier, and there's quite a few more that we need to put together and figure out how to deal with it as a single organization rather than the cross-department communication. We want to review and revise some of the processes that we can, that we can, in short, basically, I believe in briefing, I told some of the council a story about what it takes to get an access card for the Neapolis parking garage, which involves probably about a week, and involvement from many different departments. We want to collapse that and look at all those processes that we can shorten. So for Phase Two, we want to start that in July 2012, and it's probably going to take about a year and a half. And that includes upgrading the meter technology out on the street. The overarching goal is to make sure that we have a system that's easy for people to figure out how to use, and that every meter on the street can accept a credit card. We also want to purchase new citation handhelds and software to real-time communications, which will give us a lot of flexibility in terms of special event parking, in terms of permits, and in terms of graduated parking fines, which I'll go into a little bit later.
Councilman?
Your Honor, thank you. On this issue of upgrading meters, I'm sure that you could probably do just about anything you want to now with them. Is it possible that we can begin to initiate a pay-only-as-needed kind of a system on the streets where we have these meters? And what I mean by an example is maybe if you pull into a spot with one of these meters, you insert a credit card or a debit card, and you don't pay until you leave, so that you get charged for what you actually used?
Councilwoman, that is an industry question that has not been answered yet. It is very difficult to look at that. There are workarounds. There are devices called in-vehicle parking meters, which are actually small meters that you can actually put on your dashboard and activate independently, and then when you come back to the parking space, you can actually turn them off. I'm sure you've heard there are a number of companies that will place sensors in the road that can detect when a car parks in a space and sort of activate the "meter." Unfortunately, in large-scale applications, that system does not display enough uptime to make it worthwhile. With a system like that, you have to have virtually 100% uptime, and that has not been demonstrated. It's an interesting technology, but it's not quite where it needs to be for reliance on the system.
I understand, and you'd have to cut into the streets and all that. But in fact, if you just did it at the meter where you can change and upgrade as you go along, I mean, every few years, something new happens, you just change the head, or the software, or the firmware, whatever it is. So I'm just trying to figure out something that becomes compatible, and then you change the rates, maybe depending on the street, the proximity to more businesses and so on. Everything could be right there. And you say it's not there yet, the technology's not there, or did I hear you incorrectly?
No, the technology is actually not there yet. The problem is, is that I sort of liken it to Walmart. With Walmart, you walk in through a door. So you can't get into the store or out of the store unless you walk through the doors. That's a passive security system, you know, basically, you can control what goes in and out of your store. With a parking space, you cannot do that. You can't control access, you can't control egress. So you have to have virtually a 100% reliable method of determining when a parking space is being used and who it's used by, and you can't control when they leave, so you cannot physically exact payment before the vehicle leaves. So it is a completely uncontrolled asset that you're trying to charge for, which is very difficult to do on sort of an honor system. In other words, somebody comes in and they park, you have to determine when they start parking, and then you have to determine when they stop parking. And if they pay on the way out, you don't have a physical barrier to leaving in order to get the payment before it leaves, unlike a hotel room, which you need a key and a deposit to get into, or unlike, you know, a retail store, which, again, you have controlled access points.
Let me think, just run this by, I don't want to belabor this because it's, you know, I don't want to make it longer, just seems like anything's possible. A meter, a person parks in a spot, we're going to continue to have enforcement people. So they would be cruising around looking at meters, there would be people at a meter. A meter could show that someone has inserted a payment card at the time that they came in. If it shows they did not, then they get cited. So therefore, that vehicle is there, and once that's gone in, you can set a minimum charge. If they forget to check out, you can set some sort of four, six, or eight-hour minimum charge on that credit card, which you now have permission to charge, and of course, it's in their interest to click out. But I think the meter itself could say everything you need to say so that the enforcement person, either driving by and sensing it with an RFID sensor of some kind, or just visually can tell that, in fact, there is somebody there, that they did check in, and when they're gone, if they didn't check out, well, they're going to get dinged for the larger amount or some negotiable kind of sum. I would just bet that that can be done.
It probably can be, it hasn't been yet. But the goal is to install meters that have power, communication, and a way to take money. So with that infrastructure in place, whenever a new technology becomes available and new systems and software become available, since we have power, communication, and a way to take money, theoretically, we would be able to integrate new technology, new payment systems into what we have on the street.
Well, yeah, okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next thing in that year and a half that we want to look at is special event and nighttime and weekend parking. We want to develop a plan to manage the city assets. We want to create consensus and share information with private assets so that, again, when there's a special event downtown, you have a lot of people that are not used to coming down here, they know where to go, what to expect, and how much it's going to cost them when they come downtown, whether they park with us or that they park with someone else. We also need to look at the on-street rates and enforcement hours. Some places, we have meters, don't make any sense. There are some places where meters are installed, it actually costs us more to replace the batteries every six months than in revenue we generate from the meters. And there are some places where we really need to have meters because we need to create the turnover. So we want to look at all the blocks, all the streets, and make changes as we need to so that it actually fits the business demand for the area.
I would like to highly recommend that those areas where you know they shouldn't be, that you get them out, or bag them, or do something soon so everybody knows we're working on the parking issue.
Mayor?
Please, yes, Councilman.
Thank you so very much for bringing that forward, because I recall a few years back when we had a conversation in regards to the parking meters. I believe it was during a time where parking enforcement wanted to add some additional meters, and I challenged them that there's meters in downtown just east of Las Vegas Boulevard that was not getting any use, and there was no need to have those meters out there. And I agree with you that those meters that are not being used, and it's costing us more money to have them out there than what we're bringing in, we do need to remove those meters and basically reposition them. So, Brandy, I'm glad that you're bringing this forward, because I knew that years ago, but it took someone of your expertise to basically bring that research forward, to basically justify my thought and other councilmembers' thoughts as far as those meters that are out there that really serve no purpose. And so, I agree, they don't need to be bagged, they need to be taken out until the demand asked for or requires it. Thank you.
But I would say the bags are much cheaper than going through that, and it's east Las Vegas, and it grows down east Fremont and in that area, you may have to put them back. So to have somebody or some group come along, take them out, bags are cheap, put a lock around them, the neighborhood will be thrilled.
We can certainly do that. So the last phase, which we think is going to take another year, and this is just a sort of a partial list because we anticipate other things are going to come up, is we want to review and revise the fine structure. We want to assess it relative to safety hazards, which should be a higher penalty if you get a parking ticket, relative to existing rates. Your expired meter ticket actually needs to be in line with how much it costs to park there. And we want to make sure that we are trying to set our fine rate and structure to actually get people to change their behavior rather than continue to ticket them and use it as a revenue source. We want to look at real-time occupancy, both on-street and off-street, which, again, we can then push out to the public via cell phone, PDA, GPS, internet, interactive wayfinding signs, and also take a look at facilitating advanced parking space reservations, both on our property as well as on some of the private property, developing sort of an overarching plan. So, this slide is very busy, but basically, this is a summary of revenues and expenses for last fiscal year, the current fiscal year, and then projection for the next three fiscal years. As you can see, revenue goes up, but citation collection revenue actually drops by $1 million over the course of the next two years. Expenses stay relatively flat, but if you look at the bottom line, our operating margin continues to improve over the course of the next three, four years. So the problem is, even though you can tell we have a positive operating margin, is that there is a significant parking structure debt load that cannot be absorbed by the enterprise system right now, given the operating surplus. So it's being supplemented by the general fund. And the goal, over the longer term, is to make that go away and take that burden off of the general fund. As you can see, it's going to take a little while. If you look at fiscal year 12, the debt load is almost $10 million, and that has directly to do with the final payment on the Neapolis land, as well as the defecence of the outstanding bond balance on the Stewart Avenue garage so we can facilitate the sale. So from fiscal year 12 on, you see debt from the Neapolis, and you see debt from the New City Hall garage. Just those two parking structures are enough to significantly put the enterprise fund underwater. So we want to make sure that that goes away over time because the general fund can use those funds for something else. This is sort of a capital improvement plan. Right now, there is $7.6 million available in the enterprise fund. We are proposing to do a number of capital projects, some of which I talked about before, over the next three years totaling about $4.6 million, all of which would be funded from the enterprise fund, none from the general fund. So that's pretty much about it. What we are asking today for the council is to endorse the parking asset management plan, should you agree with it. If you do that, we will begin to move forward on some of the elements of this, but we will need to come back in the future with a supporting municipal code change that transfers enforcement authority from detention and enforcement to economic and urban development, and does a couple of other things, as well as a capital expenditure plan, which has some implications in fiscal year 11. So that would be at a future meeting.
Thank you. That was wonderful, wonderful report. So you're asking for our acceptance of the plan thus far, and any specifics will be forthcoming in the future. So it's the acceptance of this plan as given. So any comments, questions? Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Just a couple of basic questions, and I'm talking about the meters in the downtown area and in particular around the Regional Justice Center. I just want to make sure that they're, I'm going to call it user-friendly. Now, you mentioned something about in the future having all parking meters to be accessible by a credit card. Would those also be accessible by the use of change, quarters, nickels, and dimes, that kind of thing?
Yes, absolutely. At this point, it's not feasible to put in credit card-only meters. There is typically 40% to 50% of the population that pays in cash. I don't think that we should eliminate that enforcement change.
And that's my point exactly. You know, in my experience in dealing with the downtown court area for more than 30 years, people have quarters, people have nickels and dimes, and not all those people have credit cards. So I want to make sure that they're change-accessible as well as credit card. And then the second thing, and I think I brought this up to you at a briefing, is make sure that we can read these parking meters, because sometimes the digital printout, or sometimes the numbers that appear on a screen are really hard to read, number one. And number two, sometimes the directions on these parking meters, I think I'm taking a test. You know, I mean, the old days are, there's a little slot, you put a quarter in, the thing pops up, and you know you've got 30 minutes. So just the ease in usage is something I want to amplify.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Brandy, if you go back to the previous slide, you kind of whizzed through that. Is the capital plan, is this the capital plan for the parking department, the newly-structured, suggested parking department?
That's correct. It deals with both on-street, off-street, our physical office, wayfinding systems is basically designed for the entire parking system of the city, not just one particular piece.
And so the $4.6 million, is that annual?
No, that's over the course of the next three years. So for fiscal year 2012, we're looking at about $1 million. For fiscal year 13, $2.7 million. For fiscal year 14, about $950,000. So it totals up to $4.6 million.
Okay, so roughly for the next four years, you're looking at approximately $1 million a year to operate the department?
For the next...
Three years.
For the next three years, those are not operating costs, those are strictly capital projects.
Okay, so let me rephrase my question. What would be the budget for this newly-found department to operate its annual budget? And how would that impact our general overall budget for the city of Las Vegas?
Councilman, maybe I can take a stab at the second question. Well, Brandy, maybe you can go back to the slide with the operating numbers. This is all funded out of the parking enterprise fund. So right now, we fund our parking system in multiple departments out of the enterprise fund. We're going to be doing the same thing, we're just going to be doing it within a single department. So it will not impact our redevelopment budget, directly at least. It may improve development opportunities and may help our revenue. It won't impact our general fund budget either, other than trying to eliminate that negative margin after debt service. And you see, that's the importance of it, that we have to invest money in the system to improve the financial health of the system so that ultimately, the system is self-sufficient.
Mr. Arndt, would you explain so the public understands what an enterprise fund is and what you're talking about here, please?
Sure, and I don't think Mark's close enough to kick me if I get it wrong, but enterprise fund is simply a separate fund within the city's accounting that is held exclusively for a particular function. So we do this in other things like our building department when you pay building fees. It's an enterprise fund to manage our parking assets. So it's to handle basically everything related to parking, operations, debt service, with the exception of that general fund augmentation. So it's a separate fund, it doesn't relate at all to the city's general operating fund and...
What I'm getting at is, this is a fund, if I understand correctly, that the income from that particular entity pays for the operation and what's going on. So it costs the city nothing. It's income coming in derived from that entity that is the enterprise fund, therefore it pays the bills.
Mayor, if I may, Mark Vincent. You hit right on the head. Enterprise funds are designed to categorize activities that look a lot like a business enterprise, where customers are paying by the drink or for the services that they provide. So that's why building and safety, a parking enterprise fund, a sewer enterprise fund, where you have a certain set of customers, and only those that use a service are paying for it, therefore, it's not a general government function, and the revenues pay for the cost of those services. So you're exactly right.
Okay, so it does not cost the city, it's the income coming in that pays for what we're talking about, and the capital plan, and the operation. The money's coming in from parking, that you have outlined here, pay for the operation and the capital plan.
That's exactly correct, with the exception of, we have to cover that negative margin at the end of the day with that general fund augmentation that eventually, if we're successful, we'll eliminate, and it'll be completely self-sufficient.
So is that sort of a loan? So is that sort of a loan to cover it?
Mayor, if I may, when we, there are a few projects that we undertook that were economic or redevelopment-related, but we did not have the capacity in the RDA at the time to finance those. And we made some decisions along the way, both with the Stewart Street Garage here that supports City Hall, as well as the Neapolis Underground Garage, to fund those with general obligation bonds. And to the extent that the Parking Enterprise Fund can generate enough revenue to service that debt, that would be great. But currently, as you can see from the data that Brandy has shown, the excess operating revenues are not sufficient to cover all of the debt service requirements for those two facilities. And that was a decision that was made at the time when those facilities were built.
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilman?
Thank you. And thank you all for that clarification, because it just clears up some more questions for me. So Bill, you mentioned that the goal here is to restructure our asset in order to take the parking off of the general fund, as far as this general fund having to subsidize the parking. Is that accurate?
I think manage our asset better and provide a better service for our customers. And in doing so, it's our belief that the system's going to be healthier financially. We're going to get more revenue, and ultimately, we'll be able to, as you see, in those out years, the margin after debt service becomes quite small. And if we took it out further, we'd eventually eliminate it. So the goal here is, this is really one of those classic downtown good problems to have. We have an oversupply of parking. There are cities across the country that would beg to have such a problem, because what it does is, it means when we have new developers come in, they don't have to build new expensive structure parking. They can oftentimes tap into the existing system. So having laid the groundwork with that investment, it's going to help us attract new development. It's going to force us to be business-friendly. We're going to do a lot of validation programs with downtown businesses. So the customer on the front end, when they go to park, they're a frequent customer of pick your favorite downtown restaurant, they could have a validation set up to where it's seamless, and they don't have to fumble for coins. So we're going to be providing a better service for our customers, and ultimately, that's going to lead to more revenue for the system, and it's going to be able to operate at a positive margin over time.
Final question. Are there any other obligations we have to the enterprise fund that would jeopardize what we're trying to accomplish with the parking system? Meaning, are there any other uses that we're obligated to, that we utilize the enterprise capital to assist?
Mark and Brandy may want to help me with this question, but to my knowledge, you really have the complete picture, the overview, in this presentation. So the impediments are really shown on this slide. It's really absorbing those sunk costs, the garages that we've done. We did one very expensive one, the subterranean garage at Neapolis. That's taking time to absorb that debt service. But you see the light at the end of the tunnel downstream, when we start to run a positive operating margin. So it's really mainly those sunk costs in the garages.
So it's mainly the Neapolis and the Stewart Street Garage that impacts this enterprise fund?
Correct. So you see Stewart Avenue. That's why the financing cost in 12 is higher than 11. We're defeating the bonds that were used to pay for the construction of the Stewart Avenue Garage to enable the sale to Zappos. So you see that, rather than funding that over time, we have to basically pay off that debt. So you see the impact of that single garage. Neapolis was an expensive garage also. So it's taken time to absorb that.
Go back to that slide, so I can follow you.
It should be, if you look at the fiscal 12 column on the slide, it should be up showing debt service.
12.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Again, Mark, let me step in again for a second. First of all, let me just explain the defeasance issue. The situation you have here is, we issue tax-exempt bonds to build a public garage. Once that public garage goes to a private use, we can no longer support it with a tax-exempt debt. So that debt has to be paid off, if you will. Defeasance is just a fancy way of paying it off. To be perfectly accurate here, the monies for the defeasance is actually not coming out of the general fund, but coming from other capital project reserves that we had already budgeted for when we did this fiscal year planning. What Bill said earlier is technically correct. This is a complete picture, but you can't tell for certain that the debt service, all the debt service was principally being paid for out of the general fund, except the defeasance was funded probably from multiple sources, most of it being from the Capital Project Fund. So just to be technically accurate. But that's why we have to defuse the debt.
That's very important, because the enterprise concept is that is self-sustaining. Whatever you're talking about is self-sustaining and not impacting. But these funds have already been allocated, set aside, either out of the capital, or what you've just commented to. Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. The issues, a couple of issues here, I just wanted, I think there are simple answers, but you're not asking us to vote today on the capital expenditures for the equipment for FY13, are you?
No.
Okay. So that'll come up in the budget hearings and in the discussions in the springtime?
Yes, Councilman.
Okay. Then I'll reserve any questions on that for later. And then, just one more time, I'd like to hear justification for moving the department all under EUD, Bill. I don't know if that's up to you or not, but again, the reason I ask this question is to make sure, because we have your department, which probably would like to give away all the spots, because you'd do anything you could to get anybody downtown. And we have DNE, which would like very much to grab all the money it could out of the meters. So we've got to figure out, what balance do you approach philosophically, as well as then managerially, if we're going to move it all into your shop?
Well, Councilman, I'll take a stab, and this has been part of a broader team, so I'd invite Scott Adams to weigh in as well. I think the first question is, why consolidate in the first place, and why manage it ourselves? And we actually did a while back, a request for proposal process, and we actually had private parking companies from around the country present proposals to us on how to manage the system themselves, or to better manage the system. And unlike a lot of other cities, Chicago is the most notable example, which went down the route of selling their system to the private sector and selling off all that future revenue, a lot of the respondents said, you're actually doing a very good job with all the components managing the system. Your collections are doing really well, and that's a credit to our financing. Your enforcement is doing really well. You're just not managing it altogether as a system. Ultimately, you want to make sure, the way I like to think of it is, you think of your favorite retail store, whether it be Starbucks or another, what do they want? They want repeat customers. How do we get repeat customers coming to downtown to parking? And that customer-centric approach is, I think, one of the reasons why we moved it to economic development. And it's really similar to what we're doing at the DSC. How do we make and serve the customer? These customers are coming primarily to downtown businesses. These customers are parking in parking garages, whether they're owned by us or owned by the gaming properties, to patronize downtown. There are some exceptions that we noted that are important to work on as we evolve this snapshot market study, to look at the medical districts and others. But how do we provide a great service to our customer? It's my philosophy in doing so, that we can operate the system financially healthy, which means that after debt service, including the debt service, we should not have to rely on the general fund. It should operate with a positive margin. Philosophically, it doesn't need to be a high margin. It just needs to make sure we're covering all our expenses, providing a great service, and that will go a long way to supporting both downtown redevelopment, as well as economic development, bringing new businesses in. And I'd invite Mr. Adams.
I'll go ahead and weigh in. Scott Adams, Chief Urban Redevelopment Officer. This was one of the residual portions of our reorganization process that we went through as part of our fundamental service review, where we had actually originally looked at outsourcing our parking function. We actually went through an RFP process. We got proposals from firms throughout the United States, looked at how other cities throughout the United States do it. And what we discovered in that process is, we could do just as good a job doing it ourselves. And those cities that have done it very, very well are those that have tied it to their economic development and redevelopment functions as part of a strategic asset management approach. When you look at an aerial photograph of downtown, and I think Brandy kind of illustrated that with that map early on, every one of those blue parcels, in many cases, offers a redevelopment site or opportunity. If you talk to a redeveloper and they look at service parking, they look at it as a development opportunity. And we have located our strategic asset management function in the Economic and Urban Development Department. So we wanted to marry the two, so we could do the best possible job of marrying the customer service aspects of parking that Bill talked about with driving economic development and redevelopment.
Okay. That's a good answer. Thank you.
Great. Good answer, he said. I want you to make sure your microphone's on when you say that. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of the things we spent a lot of time talking about at the city is how technology can help make things more efficient and more effective and more cost-effective. And we've kind of talked a little bit around the fringes about technology and this whole system. And kind of one of the reasons I bring it up is, I just bought a new iPhone for us, and probably half the people in this room probably have an iPhone for us. And luckily, I have two daughters that can show me how to use it. But, you know, I'm downloading apps that, you know, tell me, you know, which classes are available at the Las Vegas Athletic Club, where to find restaurants, and gas stations, and I don't know, maybe we can have an app for the city of Las Vegas parking that tells people how to pay, and where parking spaces are available, things like that. So I don't know who does those kind of things, but I'm hoping that you're looking at all those technology-related issues, because, you know, I'm sure, I know Councilman Wilson brought up, people need to have a way to pay and change, but eventually, you can probably pay with this stuff off your phone. So if you could just talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Councilman. Actually, there are a couple of apps already out there that will give you real-time availability, both on-street and off-street. Unfortunately, we do not have the supporting technology on the street, which again, is why issuing an RFP for new parking meters is pretty much the top priority. Once we get the technology, the hardware out there that's capable of working with the apps, then we can take existing apps, and we can create our own, and, you know, we can get the information out there. With a non-communicated, single-spaced, coin-operated parking meter, we have no information that we can use to create an app from. So there's a lot, you know, there's prepayment, there's off-street payments, there's on-street payments, there's parking, where are the parking spaces? All of those apps either exist already, or are easy to develop once you get the information. So that's what we're trying to do first, is invest in the technology that will give us the information. Then we can move forward with all the fancy stuff.
Isn't it wonderful how updated we are? I'm so proud of you, so quickly. But hopefully, they'll tell us too, one day, where the empty space is at this moment. Your map will show. There's a space available on Fourth and Bridger. Yes, Councilman?
Thank you. Councilman Anthony is dead on. Speaking of the technology, downtown Seattle, San Francisco, Chicago, their cities have hotspots. Their downtowns are hotspots. And that's something that I would like to see the city of Las Vegas look at, becoming a hotspot, where, you know, for those that are, you know, technologically savvy, will understand what that hotspot really represents. And I believe that we're at a point in time to where, with, for example, Zappos being, you know, at the forefront of innovation and their programs that they're bringing downtown, and all of the others that are looking to come into the downtown, we, I believe, as a city, should have that versus someone else coming in and being able to grab that before we can put that in place. And so maybe that's something that Mr. Marcela can work on in the process of opening it up, force to have the point of the portal entry to determine, Mayor, whether or not there's a vacancy on Fourth Street. And so from a technological standpoint, the city of Las Vegas is really behind the eight ball on a lot of the technology when it comes to the technological infrastructure that we could really benefit as a city financially. Because, you know, people are paying to be a part of that infrastructure. And I believe that we can increase our revenues by basically getting in on that superhighway speed train that other communities are really taking advantage of. With that being said, Brandy, you also mentioned you're looking to hire one full-time and two part-time employees. I know that we've, just within the last few years, we've gone through a restructuring of city staff. And so when you mentioned bringing on employees, it piqued my interest as far as wanting to know, you know, if in fact, this is the direction we're moving in. I want to make sure that we're moving in this direction accordingly, seeing how in fact, we can either rehire some of the employees that we had to let go, and if not, why not? And in the process, going over to some comments that my colleague, Councilman Wilson, have been bringing up for the last few years now, and that's the new employee. How does all that basically come into play with the recommendation of the one full-time and two part-time employees that you're requesting this council to consider?
Well, I apologize if I speak out of turn, but it's my understanding that, you know, our plan is definitely for those vacancies to pull from previous city employees that have been laid off. I believe that that's part of the bargaining contract.
We have an obligation under the contract that if an individual held one of those positions or is qualified for those positions, that we call them back first. So that's what we will do. And the budget includes these, funding for these positions. So it's not a new allocation or new positions. They're vacant positions that would be filled as we implement this plan. And so that's the process that we use, Councilman, whether it's for a parking recreation leader or other positions in the city, we go to that recall list first.
So just for point of clarification, those employees that had to be let go, they would be called back in, so they wouldn't be considered a new employee?
No. And they come in under their old contractual rights.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we accept the report as presented, please.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion. No, not at this point. Thank you. There's a motion, if you'll please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Mr. Aron. Bag those meters, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will move on now to item number 20. Boards and Commissions for Possible Action, Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, RTC Advisory Committee on Bus Bench Shelter Construction and Maintenance. Mel Irwin, term expires 1/7/2012. William McCurdy, term expires 1/21/2012. Procedure for this board requires appointment by the City Council. Options are: appoint a new member to fill the seat, reappoint Mr. McCurdy, or appoint a new member to fill the seat. Are there recommendations?
Mayor.
Councilman Ross?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to express gratitude to Mr. McCurdy for his service on the Bus Shelter Board, and would like to make a motion to appoint new member, Vernell Paul McNeil, to that position to serve...
Could you spell the first name, please?
Vernell. V-E-R-N-E-L-L. Paul McNeil.
And McNeil spelled how?
M-C, capital N-E-A-L.
Thank you.
To fill that position, Mayor. That's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion. Any comments, anybody? Questions, comments? There's a motion. Please vote. We're holding on. There we go. Motion, please vote. Okay. Please post. Motion carries. And now, moving on to item number 21.
Let me do 20 first.
Okay. Oh, and moving backwards. Mel Irwin's term expires 1/7/2012. Is there a motion on this? Is there a motion on this replacement?
Mayor Goodman.
Yes, Councilwoman?
That was my appointment, and I have somebody, but I just need a little time to check a few things out. So, next meeting, we will have a name.
By the 18th?
Yes.
Okay. So, this would be obeyed, please. And is that motion accepted to obey this replacement? Please vote. Please post. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Councilwoman. And now, on to possible action. Park, is it Park or Parks? Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Kyle Stevens' term expires 1/8/2012. Option is for the city to appoint a new member to fill this seat. Is there a recommendation, please?
Mayor Goodman.
Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I have a recommendation for that position. And first, I'd like to thank Mr. Kyle Stevens for the time he served on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Mr. Stevens has been an outstanding citizen volunteer, did an outstanding job on the committee, served for many years. Unfortunately, when the meeting times, it was necessitated to change the meeting times, they did not fit in with his schedule of work. So, he no longer could be a member of the committee, but we do want to thank him very much for his efforts. Then, as a result, I would like to nominate Billy Bastian to be considered by the City Council as his replacement and new appointment. Most of you know Billy. She's a native of Las Vegas, proud to be considered a lifetime local resident. She had the opportunity in 2010 to retire from the City of Las Vegas, where she had served for many years as Director of Leisure Services, and she has remained active in the community through volunteerism, particularly with senior citizens. Her education, professionalism, and volunteer experiences, and her unwaveringly belief that parks, arts, and recreation programs play a vital role in our citizens' quality of life confirms that she would be an asset to this commission. She believes very strongly that our community deserves great parks, community centers, where people can meet and receive experiences that have positive impacts. She's really been involved in setting up the city's vision of being a world-class city, and she believes that very much in parks and recreation, and has followed through on that. So, we are very proud in Ward Two to present a name for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
You now move to Ward Two? There's a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you to Kyle Stevens, as well as to Mr. McCurdy. Moving on to item number 22. Items 22 through 24, Bills 2012-1 through 2012-3 will be heard at the Recommending Committee meeting on Tuesday, January 17, 2012. I'd like to have these bills read, please.
Thank you, Honor. Bill number 2012-1, in order to adopt that certain agreement entitled First Amendment to the Restatement and Redevelopment Agreement between KAG Properties LLC and Property Management Matters. Bill number 2012-2, in order to establish means of allowing the use of community gardens in certain residential, commercial, industrial zoning districts of the property. And finally, Bill number 2012-3, in order to amend the Certain Town Center Development Standards Manual to adjust the land use treatment of pet boarding, solar panels, and small wind energy systems and property matters.
Thank you very much. Let's see. And the new bills are assigned to the council members, Councilmen Barlow and Coffin, to review at that meeting on January 17, Tuesday, the council meeting. May I have a motion to, do not need a motion, a motion to adjourn until 1:00 P.M., please?
Sorry, to recess?
We will be in recess. Thank you very much to 1:00. I have the power. We'll be in recess until 1:00. Thank you.
And now, speaking to a packed house, I would like to reconvene the afternoon session of City Council. And we are on item number 25. For possible action, any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
We do not have any items, Mayor.
Thank you very much. There is nothing to vote on, therefore. We are moving on to item number 26. This is public hearing. For possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 1300 Douglas Drive for fees in the amount of $2,709.75 and assess a maximum $41,500 in daily civil penalties. Property owner Robert, or is that Robert, do you suppose? Robert J. Sibulkin. That's in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the property owner present? If you are, please come forward. And Mr. Bowes. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Mayor.
Thank you.
There's been some miscommunication relative to this item. We received a message from the Bank of America. The property is in foreclosure. The bank is taking possession of it, and they would like to pay the out-of-pocket expenses and discuss with the council the civil penalties. And so the bank has requested it decided to be held in abeyance until your February 1 city council meeting.
Okay. There's a request from staff on this item. Any questions?
No. I would move to obey this to the first meeting in February.
Thank you. There's a motion to obey this item to the 1st of February. Please vote. Please post.
Councilwoman.
So done. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 27. Public hearing for possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located 5917 West Washington Avenue for fees in the amount of $2,268.75 and assess a maximum penalty of $41,500 in daily civil penalties. Property owner Patricia A. Quambau, and this is in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Property owner, are you present? Mr. Bowes.
Mayor members of the council, Mike Bowes, Code Enforcement Manager. The major cross streets to this property are Washington and Jones. This case was opened in April of 2011. We issued a notice and order for substandard conditions on May 4, 2011, and we closed the case on November 23, 2011. The property is not in foreclosure, and we've been notifying the property owner of record. We commenced our abatement action on September 30 of 2011 and completed it shortly thereafter. The abatement work consisted of removal of refuge waste, high weeds from all yards, and the application of herbicide, and boarding of open windows and doors on the house. The city's out-of-pocket expenses on this property is $2,268.75, and accrued daily civil penalties total $70,000. For a total civil fines, penalties, and out-of-pocket expenses, $72,268.75, and the property is valued on Zillow as of December 15 at $65,800.
Question. You mentioned the daily civil penalties, or in this, in our report, it's 41-5. How did we get to 70,000? Or did I miss read something?
One moment, Mayor. Oh, I see. Which...
This one.
Okay. You are correct, Mayor. And my apologies. The accrued daily civil penalties are $41,500.
Thank you. And the Zillow is 65 what?
$65,800.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions from council on this, or it is a public hearing? If you have something you'd like to add, please come forward. You promised not to harass us, remember?
The owner's name, is it on the way to foreclosure? What's going on?
It is still listed in the owner of records name.
Well, beat up on him and get your money. Thanks.
I have a question. In our neighborhood, there's a home, which I had no idea, but the owner just walked away from it. Walked away. It's not, I don't believe in foreclosure, but the swimming pool, as I understand it, and it was not reported by anybody, became infested with mosquitoes. And a gentleman, they have not yet tied it together, but around the corner, but on the backside of that developed West Nile fever, and actually passed away from that. And they're assuming where he got that was out of the pool, and the infestation of the mosquitoes and everything, of this home that's just been walked away from. So where does a house like this one, or the one I'm talking about, where does the city go with these homes that are just walked away from and left?
In the particular case that you're talking about, Mayor, relative to a swimming pool that has standing water in it, we're required by law to notify the property owner that there's that condition, give them notice and order to abate that. If they don't do it, we have the pool pumped, and we also treat the pool with chemicals to eliminate the hazard of both the West Nile virus, as well as eliminating an attractive nuisance to children in the area accessing the pool and potentially falling in it and drowning. So the city does cause those substandard pools to be abated. Relative to the property owner's walking away from property, that's not an uncommon occurrence, and we continue to do our notice and orders to the last registered owner of record, try and identify who the lender is on the property and see if we can get the lender's support. But ultimately, the item comes before you. If there's been no response, you impose civil fines and penalties. Those fines and penalties are put as liens against the property, recorded on the tax assessment rolls, and then within the next year after it's been recorded on the tax assessment rolls, those liens become payable at the same time that the property taxes are due. If the property taxes and the liens aren't satisfied, then it goes through the process through the assessor's office in terms of selling the property.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
Mayor, on your immediate question, wasn't it how you take care of a pool problem?
Well, mine was sort of a...
Any citizen, we don't have to go to the city. I mean, any citizen can call the Health Department. That's where you go, right to the Health Department.
Actually, Councilman, we have an arrangement with the San Nevada Health District. Henderson, Las Vegas, North Las Vegas have arrangements whereby, for the last several years, we've been addressing those issues on behalf of the Health District, and we're currently having some discussions with them as far as how we will continue to provide those services.
But that's an emergency, Mike. It's not a thing that you have a lot of paperwork to follow, notices or anything like that. We have the authority to go out and dose those pools immediately.
As imminent hazards, I believe you're correct, and I have to refer to...
So that's important, because I think, you know, getting...
My understanding is we've been doing notices and orders on those? No, we have not. Okay. A correction notice?
And do you want to state your name since now you are really involved in this?
The here's in this, Senior Code Enforcement Officer. We, the officers, when they find the pools, they dose them with a chemical to stop the mosquito larvae, and we do a correction notice. Now, if it's open and accessible, it's a three-day correction notice because it's a hazard. If it's secured, then the property owner gets 10 days.
Right, Vicki, but the most important thing is the infestation. That's taken care of immediately by, as soon as we find out about it. We don't wait for notices to be responded.
We treat the pool when the officer's out there for the first trip, yes.
Right. Okay. That's important.
Well, and this, just in this particular case, and I only brought it up because it was a walk-away situation like this omen in discussion, was because that was a pool that was behind the house, that was not visible to anybody because the walls were higher, high enough. Everything was enclosed, so you wouldn't enter the property. And it was only because the gentleman behind, off around the corner, got sick with West Nile, and they couldn't figure out where it came from. And then they thought, which nothing's been proven, but just curious about what happens with homes that are actually abandoned, that are not owned by the bank, but the owner has walked away. So that's why this one. Sorry to get us off track, but I was curious. So at this point, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Just like to comment that it's sad that none of the neighbors noticed that or reported that in. They could have called your office, they could have called our office, they could have called the Health Department, because I was not aware of that at all.
Well, and what's interesting in our particular case is when you drive by it, it looks absolutely presentable. So there's nothing, you know, you might have thought somebody had taken a long cruise, you know, for a month or something.
I was just, did any of the neighbors notice the mosquitoes? That's what I was wondering. Anyway, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendations as far as the hard costs are involved, $2,268.75. And in the hope that a lower cost on the civil penalties might induce the owner to get involved, because if it doesn't, then we'll have to come back again, right?
Yes, ma'am.
In the hope of that, I'd like to take 1/4, 25% of the civil penalties, which are 41-5, and make it approximately $10,400 civil penalties.
Okay. There's a motion. Any questions, anything for Councilwoman Tarkanian? There's a motion. Please vote. Please post.
He voted. Okay.
Thank you. That motion carries. We are now on to item number 28. Try and turn the page here. This is also a public hearing for possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located 7600 Botany Bay Drive for fees in the amount of $2,905.25 and assess a maximum of $62,000 in daily civil penalties. Property owner is Charles Spielman, Charles C. Spielman, Ward 4. This is Councilman Anthony. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Property owner or representative present?
Property owner is not present, but Scott McDonald retained by the property owner yesterday evening.
Thank you. Mr. Bowes.
Mayor members of the council, Mike Bowes, Code Enforcement Manager. The nearest major cross streets to this property are Buffalo and Cheyenne. This case was opened in June 2 of 2011. A notice and order of substandard condition was issued on June 13, and we closed the case on November 3 of 2011. Our records indicate that the property is not in foreclosure. The city was required to go in and debate the substandard conditions, and we performed that work on October 31. The abatement work consisted of the removal of refuge waste, high weeds from all yards, and the application of herbicide, and the boarding of open windows and doors. The city's total out-of-pocket expenses for this abatement are $2,905.25, and the accrued daily civil penalties are $62,900. Correction, $62,000 for a total fines and civil penalties of $64,905.25. The property is valued by Zillow as of December 15 at $180,300. And for the record, I'd like to state that this is the third abatement that the city has taken on this property for similar conditions. The first abatement occurred in 2009, and the council assessed civil fines, penalties, and costs of $36,535.
Were those met at that time?
To my understanding, the fees were not paid and the liens were filed. A second abatement action occurred in 2010 for similar conditions. At that point in time, the council assessed out-of-pocket expenses and civil fines totaling $60,269. So with those two preceding actions and the action before you today, total fines, civil penalties, and costs on this property will total $161,709.25.
Wow. Would you like to say something?
Big number.
And you were retained yesterday.
Yes. Yes, I was contacted yesterday. A little history. You have as much history, maybe different history than I do, but the owner involved is Dr. Spielman is a cardiologist.
I'm sorry, I've been asked by council, could you repeat your name?
Yes, my name is Scott McDonald with the firm of McDonald and Judd.
Thank you very much.
There is a cardiologist in town with the same name. My name is initial J. Scott McDonald. His name is Scott J. McDonald. We've been trading calls and emails for 25 years.
As long as you don't trade professions.
Absolutely. Turns out, Dr. Spielman is his former partner. A longtime Nevada resident, four years ago relocated. I think he essentially retired, although I do know that he's practicing and with hospital privileges in Florida. I'm mentioning that because for all I know, he may have treated one or more of you on the council today. But he's a cardiologist of some standing. He's owned this home for 20 years. He owes about $100,000 on it. So far as I can tell, because I grilled him somewhat extensively yesterday evening as to why the property had been abandoned, and the best I could deduce from him, he just didn't feel that it was abandoned. He owns it, he's been paying it, paying the property taxes, making the mortgage payment. He just hasn't been living in it. He admitted to having attempted to sell the property, initially for sale by owner, big mistake, initially attempting to do that in 2007, back when the property would have appraised for, in his words, approximately 380. Dropped the price to 350, but the property never sold. Clearly, he didn't do it right. I was not admittedly aware, didn't have access to any information to inform me about the 2009 and 2010 actions against the property. I have not pulled a preliminary title report on the property, so I do not know if those were actually recorded. I can assure the council that the doctor is not aware that those were recorded, because if he knew that, given what he owes on the property and what its Zillow estimation of value is, and by the way, in my experience, Zillow is always high, and just, just an opinion, but in my opinion, Zillow is usually high. The bottom line is the property with liens would not be worth what is owed against it. And I, of course, will examine this further and inform the doctor. The bottom line is, the city has undertaken the corrective actions. They were accomplished. He actually is in negotiations with a prospective tenant right now. I know this because this is actually how he found me. The bottom line is, he's absolutely willing to reimburse the city for its out-of-pocket costs in restoring the property. I think he feels like this was all just one big mistake. You know, four years of property ownership, I asked if he had any clue what was going on in the city of Las Vegas, and he seemed to be somewhat oblivious to our current real estate problems. But having said that, and ignorance, of course, is no excuse, I think it was somewhat innocent. I can tell from talking to him on the phone, he's an older gentleman, and he doesn't want to, he's, he wants to be a responsible property owner. I don't think he fully realized the extent to which this became a problem. Although, having said that, the city's response, of course, the enforcement officer's response would be, well, we had an enforcement action in 2009, we had an enforcement action in 2010. How could he not know about this? Hard to respond to that. I'm quite certain that he would like very much not to see an additional $60,000 in civil fines and penalties imposed on the property. And I can assure the council that as of at least yesterday evening, he'll start being a, well, he'll quit being an in absentia owner. He'll start maintaining the property, and we'll deal with what he's got to deal with. I think it's still his intent to try to sell the property, and until he does so, rent it. I think he, I truly believe that he just didn't fully grasp, A, what was going on in Nevada, in Las Vegas in particular, and the condition of his property. He apparently hasn't been actually physically on the property since 2007.
Did he indicate any indication to come back here at all for any reason?
No, he won't. We will not be returning to Las Vegas. He's permanently a resident of Florida now, but he's going to maintain the property in one form or another. I think he realizes he's got to do something with it. Like I indicated, he does have a prospective renter, because I met that renter yesterday, who kind of actually walked me through the property, kind of explaining to me what had transpired and what his goals are. But I'm also pretty confident that the doctor has no clue that there's at least $100,000 or more, or give or take $100,000 of presently filed civil penalties and assessments as a lien against the property, in addition to another 60 that they're seeking now.
And does the renter not understand keeping up the property, which is part of the problem?
Well, the renter's not in the property right now.
Oh, prospective.
Yes, prospective renter. Actually, the prospective renter lives two houses down in a property that he's about to lose to foreclosure. It's a, you know, it's a tough neighborhood. But he's looking for a place to go, wants to keep his family in that neighborhood, so he's hopeful of making a deal with the doctor to occupy this home and take care of the property on some rent concession and so on and so forth.
Thank you. This is open to public comment, so if you won't go too far away, doctor.
I won't move.
Okay.
Name that's hard. I use that old word, Donnybrook, whatever. Well, this sounds like he is trying, right, the owner?
Well, let's say it this way. He's, he's re-engaged.
Okay, well, that'll help.
As a, as a property owner.
Uh-huh, okay.
And look, in fairness, in his mind, he never disengaged. He owned the property, paid the mortgage, paid the property taxes, and there it sat. I think he just didn't fully understand the scope of what was happening here in Nevada, and the ramifications of not taking care of the trees. I understand there were a couple of big pines on the property that created, I mean, pines are messy trees anyway. They created a big problem, had to be cleared. The pool had water in it, it became a cesspool. It's been pumped now and chemically treated, so the pool is now empty. I think he gets it now. I honestly, truly believe this. I think he just simply didn't understand the scope of what was happening.
Okay, Mr. Bowes, did he pay for the drainage on the pool? Has he paid anything on this?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Goodman, ma'am. Are you done, Mr. Rogers?
Can I finish?
Yes, finish, please.
Oh, sorry. Well, all I'm trying to say, it looked like that, that he's willing to settle up, you know, clean up whatever money is owed. All I want to make sure that you get your money, and I hope the property is, you know, brought up and become livable with somebody, and maybe this can stay the day for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wolfson.
Thank you. Scott, you were out there yesterday with a prospective tenant. Did you actually go inside the house?
No, the house was locked. I was able to observe inside the home. The home itself is actually, it looks like it's in pretty good shape. In fact...
And that was going to be my question. Just hold on for one second. You know, what we're interested in, and I don't mean to take your thunder, Councilman, but we're interested in having people occupy homes.
Understood.
So one plus I'm hearing is that the absentee owner, who's been pretty derelict in his responsibilities, although I think you're offering that perhaps he can pay the hard costs, is willing to rent it and get somebody in the home. So that was my question. So it looks habitable?
Absolutely. It's absolutely occupiable. In fact, my initial, mirroring Mayor Goodman's observation about that home in her neighborhood, when I drove to the home, my initial standing out in front of an assessment was, this is a nice house. It's a nice neighborhood. It's in, it's in desert shores. The rest of the neighborhood looked fine. Like all neighborhoods in Vegas, there's a certain amount of blight occurring. But the home looked, it's very occupiable, especially with the work that the city did to clean up the property.
Mike, if we were to add up just the hard costs, forget the penalties, because this is not a request to, what's the term when we take back the penalties? Wave. This is not a request to waive the penalties, but Mike, if we were to add up the hard cost for the three times the city's been out there, could you do that? Is that easy?
That is easy to do. I don't have that information with me right now.
Well, I imagine it's $10,000, $12,000, $15,000.
Let's, let's check the file if you can give us a...
So while we're doing that, Scott, do you believe that your client would be willing to pay that?
Absolutely.
Okay, when?
I can assure the council that he would be willing to pay that. Give me a reasonable time to collect the funds, but...
Okay, 30 days?
I would think that would be reasonable.
Question, Mr. Bowes.
Yes, ma'am.
How did this, if in fact it looked so presentable driving by, and it looks lovely, did somebody in the neighborhood report it?
Your honor, it looks lovely today because the city spent several thousand dollars getting it into shape, and all these items that have come before you are complaint-driven.
They are complaint-driven. Thank you.
And allow me to say, the neighbor that is looking to rent the property himself conceded me last night that it, not so long ago, didn't look like this. I think there were two big pine trees that were the biggest culprit, and both of those have been knocked down. So today, you're right, it looks presentable. I'm certain it didn't look that way a few months ago.
Thank you.
Is public comment closed?
Nope. Come on up. In fact, we have a breather here. I know you're going to talk about the pine trees.
Talk to 40 North 19th Street. The idea of knocking down the pine trees, somebody ought to be shot.
There you go.
The public comments are open?
I love, I love the look of palm trees, but they are messy trees.
I think anybody else, only on this issue, please.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Or come, sorry, that's okay.
Mayor, in response to the council's question as far as the total cost of out-of-pocket expenses incurred by the city, and the three abatements on this property, that amount is $11,109.25.
Okay, Councilman Anthony. Okay, Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McDonald over here.
Sorry.
I appreciate you coming down and representing your client, but this... I appreciate you coming down and representing your client, but this is, this is the problem. I've been on the city council for two and a half years, and I'm very fortunate, I don't get very many of these type of houses in Ward 4. In fact, this might be the only one, and it's come up three times in the last two and a half years. We've had to go out there three times to clean this place up, and it is, it's a beautiful neighborhood and desert shores, and every five, six months, this house goes to crap. We've got to go out there and clean it up. We go back out there, we've got to clean it up, and what really ticks me off is, we spent the last two and a half years trying to contact Dr. Spielman, and he doesn't return our phone calls. He doesn't return our phone calls, he doesn't answer the mail, he just completely ignores us. And unless he's got Alzheimer's, unless he's disabled, sick in bed, if you can tell me that, then maybe I'll give you some mercy, but he just basically ignores us unless this house go to garbage in a nice area. There was one report where a neighbor called up and said they saw rats around the house. So, that's, you know, and now he retains you at the last minute, nobody contacts me beforehand, and expects, you know, some kind of, I don't know, some kind of help from the city. You know, I don't know how to do that. I'm not going to, I'm not going to waive anything. I'm going to, my motion, and I'll let the city council vote the way they want, but my motion is to attach the entire $161,709.25, and then he can rent the house out, and he can make some money off of it every month, but it just, you know, if somebody wants to cooperate with us, this city council is always ready to work with somebody, but this gentleman has not cooperated one bit, not once. My office even tried to call him, and he wouldn't return my phone calls, registered mail, and it just, I don't like that. I mean, if he would have just called us and tried to make some kind of arrangements, maybe, but to let a house kind of try to destroy an area in desert shores, it's just not right. And if we hadn't gone out there the three times, who knows what this place would look like? It would be, you know, who knows what it looks like. So, I appreciate you coming down, but my motion is going to be to attach the entire $161,709.25.
May I make one further response?
Excuse me.
Sure.
Mayor Goodman.
Yes.
Councilman Anthony, I think most of that $160 has already been leaned. So, when you say attach $161, is that right, Mike?
It's actually to attach the additional fine and civil, or the civil penalties and the abatement costs, which will bring the total up to $161,709.
I just wanted to clarify your motion, because 100 of it's already been leaned, and...
Yeah, okay. That will be the total amount, too.
Mayor Goodman?
Councilman Barlow?
Yeah, I'm slightly confused now with the councilman's motion. If you can just clarify that for me as far as, so that I can understand what...
It's my understanding, correct me, Mr. Bous, currently, there is $96,804 in liens on the property from two abatements, including fines and the actual cost of bait the property.
To include the daily civil penalties?
Correct.
Okay.
So, with the addition of the third abatement, which is the cost and the daily civil penalties of $64,905, my motion will attach that also, which will bring the total up to $161,709.25.
And what is the total according to Zap, not Zappos, but...
Zillow, 180. Wasn't it 180? 180 on Zillow.
Yes, ma'am, 180, 300,000.
Okay. I just want to ask for clarification.
Thank you. You did want to make a comment, or...
Just one final comment.
Yes, please.
I find myself in an awkward position, Councilman Anthony, because I can't really dispute anything you've just said. I'd love to say I know why this property, why this happened. I'm admittedly forming some, I'm forming some suppositions about why I think that occurred. But the flip side is, referring to the comments made by Councilman Wolfson, if the ultimate goal here is to get properties in Las Vegas occupied and back contributing to the city rather than, just by way of simple analogy, the blight that's occurring in Detroit, for example, then it would seem to me the way to do that is to not penalize property owners. This is a gentleman, I know this much, this is a gentleman that gave a lot to the city of Las Vegas for 20 years. I think you'd agree that quality health care is a major contribution to our community. He did that. He retired. I'm not excusing his lack of attention to this property. I'm not. If I was his next-door neighbor, I'd have probably knocked the tree down myself. I did that actually once with a neighbor. Big pine tree come over into my yard, they're dirty trees that dumped all their stuff into my pool constantly. I whacked off every limb that came over my wall. But I truly, genuinely, sincerely believe that this is a guy who retired to Florida, thought he was going to be able to sell his property, couldn't, I can't respond to his lack of response. The neighbor who contacted, the way this came to me, the neighbor was trying to reach the doctor, saw the notice taped to the door, I don't, he even said he had trouble finding him. He had to do some internet search to find the guy, was able to get in touch with him, mailed him the notice. The doctor swears this is the first he ever heard of any of this. What do I know? I'm just giving you what he tells me. He contacts his partner, the still, he's the cardiologist, Dr. McDonald, same last name, no relation, who says everyone, I actually represented Dr. McDonald's sister, so he sends this guy to me. That's how this all came about. I truly believe that this is an older gentleman who retired, just didn't realize what he was doing. I can tell he's somewhat fiscally conservative. My, I base that on the fact that he made attempts for two years to try to sell this property for sale by owner. We all know that's a tough, that's a tough road to hoe. He, you know, he just didn't want to pay the commissions. He's a conservative guy. And here we, and here we sit. I told him my opinion of the property's value yesterday, and he couldn't believe it. He couldn't fathom that the properties were worth what they're worth, and I explained to him a little bit of what's transpired in our fair city in the last two or three years. Bottom line, I don't, I just cannot attribute ill will to this guy. And candidly, if the city assess, assuming that the prior civil penalties are actually recorded, and I have no reason to doubt that they are, I would assume that they are, add another $60,000 plus his mortgage on the property, the council will not like to hear this, but being an advocate for my client and thinking about what's in the best interest of my client at that point, I'd have no choice but to advise the guy to let the property go, perhaps attempt a short sale. Here's what that does.
Mayor Goodman, may I interject something?
Yes.
Scott, you're doing a good job. Let me just add something. If Councilman Anthony's motion passes, and I'm inclined to go along with what he says, that's not going to stop your client from renting this property.
Agreed.
So, if he in good faith goes ahead and rents this property and gets a tenant in there, maintains the property for a few months, now we've got somebody occupied, your client still has the right to come back to this council after he's shown us some good faith and say, you know what, how about waiving some of those fees? So, I want, you know, when you communicate to your client that this council was kind of harsh on him, he's not without options once he shows some good faith in return.
Fair enough. I don't disagree with that, and I'll recommend that, if this motion passes, I'll recommend that to my client. But allow me to point one last thing out, and then I'll shut up. This is not a client who bought a home in 2005 for more than he should have paid for it to begin with, then took a second mortgage out on it, cashing out like so many people did, and then abandoned it when they could no longer afford it or when it became worth so much less than what he owed on it. This is a guy who's owned this property for 20 years, and he's never taken a second on it. He now owes $100,000 on his first. He actually believed he was doing the responsible thing for a lot of years. My point again is, he's not one of so many people, we all know them, who bought these properties, took every ounce of equity out of them to put cash in their pockets, and then walked away, creating this huge problem for the city. He's not one of those people. He's just an older guy who lived in a home for 20 years, retired, moved away. Again, I promise you, I'm not disrespecting you, and I'm not really seriously challenging your opinion about what happened. It would have irritated me, too. I am asking the city to look at the big picture here, and I think in the big picture, penalizing this guy this much, it's a heavy burden. It's wiped out any potential equity he's gotten in this home.
Keep in mind, too, what Councilman Wolfson advised.
Yes.
I think the city does needs to see some good faith, since he did not respond to anybody at all since 2009.
Fair enough.
Who wanted to help him, obviously, and at that point, he might have really had much of this waived. And so, if in fact you follow the suggestions in reporting to him, you certainly have done the most admirable job representing him. But I think the key will be, depending on how the council votes, to deliver that message that Councilman Wolfson gave you.
I assure you, I will convey it today.
Thank you.
May I ask one last question? How were, this is from my own edification, how were the civil penalties and fines calculated? How are those determined?
Mr. Bous, please.
They're calculated on a set amount per day, and the amount escalates.
Based upon the value of the property, or is it a...
It's a flat rate.
Do you know, can you tell me what that number is?
Isn't it like $100 and some dollars a day?
I thought it was 500, I think.
500 a day? Wow.
Up to 5.
Okay. I will never ignore a sacred fact compared to my property.
And if you'll hold on now, Councilman Anthony.
Yes, Mr. McDonald, you've done a great job representing your client. I appreciate that. Councilman Wolfson, I was going to ask our city attorney, Mr. Steele, just to get on the record exactly what this, if this motion does pass, what can happen in the future if I never hear about this property ever again. Okay, so if you could just let him know what exactly that is, just so the owner of the house can watch this on TV, and I want to be very clear in what can happen.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman, for the record, Dan Still from the city attorney's office. First of all, the lien, just by way of background, because you were asking earlier, and I'll put it on the record so that it's clear, the liens that were imposed back in 2009 and 2010, certainly the 2009 liens are on the tax roll on this property. If they're not, I'd be very surprised. It's usually the following July after the, in the year that occurs, so it'd been July 2010, that those would have shown up on the roll, which should have been an indicator to him that something's wrong, because it's equivalent of a tax lien, they're payable in four equal installments, two installments or a full payment. So, that's dealing with the history of it. As it relates to the current question that you have regarding, you know, what do we do with this? We're making the home upside down. Councilman Wolfson's really pretty much answered it, but the bottom line is, is that the, you have the right, and this is a policy that the council has set, and they've been very fair with it over the years, is to contact Mr. Bous in the building safety department, and you can prepare a request for a waiver of these, of the entire amount or any amount that you deem appropriate, give the backup documentation, present it to Mr. Bous. I would certainly involve the councilman, since it's his ward, he'll want to, you know, be involved in that decision-making, and then it'll come back before the council, and you'll get an opportunity to make a presentation concerning, to request the waiver. Obviously, maintaining the property in the best possible condition, getting it rented, and not having us have to go out there again and waste time and money, you know, would be a good thing for your client. So, does that adequately answer, Councilman?
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion. Would everyone please vote? Please post. Motion carries with the full assessment. Thank you very much. You might leave your business cards here, you did such a good job. And on such short notice. Awesome. All right, moving on.
I wonder if my client will agree with that.
Well, if he can get channel KCLV-TV down in Florida, have him hook up, and he'll see this all. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bous. Okay, moving on to item number 29, public hearing for possible action. To consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located 4309 Carnation Lane for fees in the amount of $1,812 and assess a maximum $48,000 in daily civil penalties. Property owner, Crosby Family Trust, Eleanor J. Crosby, trustee, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Is the property owner present or representative for that property owner? Mr. Bous?
For the record, Mike, Bous, Code Enforcement Manager. Just for council's information, this is a vacant mobile home lot, this property. The city opened its case June 15th of 2011, and noticed substandard conditions, and issued a notice and order on August 10th, 2011, and finally closed the case in November that year. We commenced abatement action on September 30th, and the abatement action consisted of removal of refuge waste, high weeds from all yards, and the application of herbicide. As the mayor stated, our out-of-pocket expenses are $1,812, and the additional daily civil penalties are $48,000. For a total accrued penalties, fines, and costs of $49,812. The property was valued on December 15th by Zillow at $42,500. For the record, our understanding is this property is owned by a family trust. The person who had ownership of the property was a grandmother. She passed away. The property is now in the hands of the trustees. We did have contact with one of the trustees, explained to her the situation, and she said that she didn't believe the family had any interest in doing anything with the lot, but would get back with, in touch with us, and she did not. I made a phone call to her last week, excuse me, the week before last, left voicemail message that it was important that she get ahold of us so we could discuss this matter, and she did not return our call. So, staff's recommendation is to impose the civil penalties and assess the city's costs against the property.
Are we, is the city in a position to force sale based on the accrual of penalties?
Dan Still from the city attorney's office, no. Simple answer at this point. That's way too early in the proceedings, Your Honor.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Please step forward, state your name.
Name is Anthony Hodges, vacant lot, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, when it's a vacant lot, there's no structure, you know what I'm trying to say? Now, this is kind of in a, you know, get what you can type thing, and if it's not going into, you know, to the county with taxes and all that kind of stuff, you know what I'm saying? You're still, it's kind of open for you to get some money out of it, but take what you can get and run.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Councilman Ross, is there a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to assess this property for the hard cost of $1,812, as well as the maximum of civil penalties of $48,000. That's my motion.
Thank you very much. Is a motion? Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Bous. Miss Ozuna, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 30, DIR 43794, abance item, director's business, non-public, non-public hearing. Applicant owner, Cliff's Edge LLC. Required review of an annual development report is required by section 5.1 of Cliff's Edge Development Agreement on approximately 1,134 acres generally located adjacent to the south side of Grand Teton Drive between Walupi and Puli Road. Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff recommends approval. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Chris Tingle, 3455 Cliff Shadows Parkway here, representing Cliff's Edge LLC.
Okay, Councilman Ross?
We would follow staff's recommendation for approval, Your Honor.
There's any other comments? There's a motion? Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you very much. This is item agenda number 31. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance letter abatements. Thank you, city clerk. Moving on to item number...
Mayor, I have to interrupt. I apologize for the city attorney. Chris, don't go anywhere. Flynn, did you need to put something on the record on that agenda item?
Actually...
Wait a minute, do you want to reopen this?
I'm afraid I'm gonna have to, Your Honor.
Please vote to reopen. I mean, if that's what your motion is.
That is my motion.
Okay, there's a motion to reopen item, where are we?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Thirty.
Oh, thirty, I'm sorry. Director's business.
Too much New Year's Eve. All right, please vote on the motion to reopen number 30. Please post. Item carries, so now here we go.
Mayor, on agenda 30, under director's business, I think Flynn has something to say on this agenda item before we look at a motion again.
Flynn Fag, Department of Planning. I was actually happy to go with the direction that you were moving since we were getting out of here relatively quickly. Let me just say for the record that Nevada revised statutes does require us to make a report on any development agreements that the city has in place. This is the annual agreement for the Cliff's Edge Development, also known as Providence. Let me just very briefly state that the major accomplishments that have been made this year is the construction of a multi-use trail, which was required by the development agreement, and also construction of one of two parks in the development. I'll just finalize my comments here today by saying that they are in compliance with the terms of the development agreement and so consequently, staff does recommend approval of this annual review.
Thank you, Mr. Fag. Okay, now is there a new motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Fag. And we just opened Nickerbacher Park up there, by the way. So, I would move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item. Thanks, Chris, for sticking around.
Please vote. Please post. Now this time you make a home or wherever you're going. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we're on to item number 32. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium. Give your name, please, for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda?
Name's Anthony Hardley, 123 Sir David. This is for Councilman Barlow. Years ago, I used to attend the Martin Luther King Parade and after they had that, breaking out that time under Councilman Weekly and he shut down the parade, I didn't, hadn't occurred there since. But the objective is, this was sent to me, a man brought it to me from the state of New York and he said that the people thought more of me being able to control the parade. The year that I didn't show up, Mr. Weekly must have lost control or something anyway. All I know, it caused the entire parade to be shut down. That was pitiful, but I hadn't been back since. But I want to get this picture to Mr. Barlow and ask him, sir, could I be in the parade with you instead of being on the side for a change? Could I show up at the parade, the day of the parade as your guest may be right on the backside of the fire wagon or whatever?
Sure.
Oh, really? Thank you. You're cute too, I like you. But the picture's for you also. Be sure to picture to the public though, I mean, to the people so they can see this. That was brought to me from the state of New York, seriously.
Don't you want Councilman Barlow's autograph?
Well, I don't like Mr. Barlow in no way. If you let me ride on the fire engine with him, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. So I better let us all get out of here. Happy New Year to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Please come forward, state your name.
Hi, my name is David Putnam. I'm with Occupy Las Vegas. This is an emergency resolution that we would like you, the City of Las Vegas Council, to consider. It's taken from parts of other cities that have done different things to help stop the foreclosure problems and the empty neighborhoods. It's perfectly, there's nothing out of line here. All you would be doing with this would be saying that you agree that the foreclosure problem has gotten out of hand. Obviously, we've been talking about abandoned houses with overgrown, you know, overgrown problems. Last few items I noticed were about that. And this would be a way that people could form coalitions to help fight, you know, eviction from their homes. This would also, and this would just be a way that you could help us as the citizens of Las Vegas put pressure onto our state representatives to do something more to make sure people don't end up being, having to move out in the middle of the night or take cash for keys or homes with overgrown, you know, with overgrown trees and cesspools being formed and swimming pools. I was listening to the pine trees. My dogs love eating pine cones, so I'm very happy my neighbor's pine trees lean over in my yard. Keeps my dogs happy. But this, all this is really is an emergency resolution. We just wish that, you know, just ask you to take your time, look it over, maybe bring it up at another meeting sometime. I have a hard copy here. I'm not sure.
If you'd be kind enough to give it to the city clerk, we will certainly review it.
And I also just, we're, excuse me, we're trying to save the city a few dollars, so we actually have it on flash drive as well that we wanted to give you guys so that way you can just load it into your computers. Nobody has to, you know, worry about printing it out, a little environmental consciousness as well.
If you'll be good enough to give it to our city clerk. Thank you.
And all we're asking is that you please read it, take it under consideration and, because we don't want, I mean, I'm seeing my neighborhood decimated. There's three homes that are for sale on foreclosure on my block alone. And it drives property, but we, I don't have to go into what the problem is. You know, we all know. And I'm originally from Detroit and was just back there a while ago and I saw what they talked about. And I would hate to see Las Vegas neighborhoods end up in some of those neighborhoods they are in Detroit. You know, it would be the desert taking the houses back and not the foliage, but still, it's the same, same situation is going on here as started there. And I don't want to see a great city like Las Vegas be, you know, I heard it one time mentioned in the mayor oil race that we had a lot of affordable housing. It's a cute way to turn our foreclosure problem, but it's not really what we want. It's not that I want homes to be out of reach like they got to be during the bubble. However, I don't think that having homes that we can sell for, you know, that were worth a quarter of a million dollars, you know, four years ago are now worth $50,000 now. I don't think that's good for anybody. I guess that red light means I'm done. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you and happy New Year. Thank you for bringing that to us. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Please come forward. Hearing none? Oh, excuse me. Please come forward, state your name.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Reed, R-E-E-D, no relation to Harry Reid. I just wanted to also back, speak as a community member to back the Occupy resolution as well. I am also an Occupy Las Vegas member and a UNLV PhD student in sociology. So part of what I study is economic and social inequalities and how they affect communities. So I'm very pleased to see a resolution like this come forward and we're just simply asking for your voices to join ours in supporting the resolution just as far as recognizing and supporting the principles that steps need to be taken to minimize economic insecurity and the destructive disparities that are creating situations such as foreclosures. We're all very aware that Nevada has the highest level of foreclosures in the nation and the highest level of unemployment. So, we're very hardly hit here. And I'm originally from northeastern Ohio and Cleveland, the city of Cleveland council was the first to pass this resolution and they have some very serious issues there. But we have even more serious issues here. So I'm asking you to please consider to look over the principles here. A lot of them are based on what the resolution that was written in Cleveland, the template was taken from there and then specific things were added for Nevada problems. So I just am asking again for you to look it over. We understand that there may be changes that you want to make. We welcome that. We welcome working with you to make any of those changes and ask you to please consider that. So, thank you for allowing to speak.
Thank you. Your predecessor gave us the copy and the flash drive. Thank you so much. Happy New Year to you.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Councilman Coffin, we got the new street lights and they are tremendous, the new LEDs. Everybody's gonna want them now, but if you haven't experienced them, you're in for a real surprise. And I mean, we had the old, and I mean, world of difference and we thank you for that. I mean, really do. The other ones shone in our windows, they were a thing. The second thing, has a seating contract been let yet for the new city hall? And I say this because every time I have to go down to that county building down there, those seats are absolutely atrocious. And these things, these are really nice. So whoever builds these things, I hope that we get the same contract for the thing.
I could just give you a quick update. Scott Adams, chief of redevelopment, they're already installed. They're wonderful seats.
Much more comfortable than the ones we have.
I'll give you my opinion on that.
Bring your pillow. I'm kidding.
This, the last thing comes from a comment that Councilman Coffin made this morning about the parking meters. And you were asking, was there any meter that had the electronics to do certain things? And the, I think her name was Brandy, said that there wasn't. I believe that this is an ideal time for the city to partner with like the electronics department at UNLV or some outfit like IGT or that to come up with something similar like that. Because if our councilman is asking that question, that same question will be answered or asked by councils throughout the United States. I went to colleges that had patents and they got rich on these patents. And if the, I'm just, if the city could put up some front money to the UNLV Department of Electronics to come up with a, with a, with the insides or something to match what we want and then maybe license that, it's just an idea. But I mean, we need jobs, you know, it's an idea. Thank you, and again, Councilman Coffin, those lights are really, really nice. I mean, thank you.
Thank you. We're on to item number 33. Council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. Is there any member of the city council wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? And so we will start way down at the right with Councilman Coffin. Has nothing to add today. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly do. Mayor Protam, Anthony and myself will be hosting the Northwest Business Network on January 12th at 6:00 PM at your Durango Hills YMCA at 3521 North Durango. We will have representatives from the city of Las Vegas's IT department there giving a presentation on the top 10 business predictions for 2012 and the strategic technologies needed to support those efforts. So Mayor Protam, looking forward to that.
And Mayor Protam, anything to add?
Just what he said.
Woo, we're on a roll. And Councilman Wilson? Oh, Councilman Wilson wants to go last. Councilwoman Tarkanian, please.
I have nothing to add.
Nothing to add also. Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, I will be hosting my annual, not annual, but monthly coffee with the councilmen at Starbucks, Rancho and Bonanza. So I will be there from 9:00 AM until 10:00 AM tomorrow morning. So the community, of course, is invited to come out and sit with me in regards to any topics that you would like to discuss with either myself and/or my staff. So tomorrow, January 5th, 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. In addition to that, the 30th Annual Martin Luther King Parade will be hosted in downtown Las Vegas, January 16th. The parade will begin promptly at 10:00 AM and will commence approximately 1:00 to 1:30 on the 16th. And immediately following, the city of Las Vegas will be hosting the MLK Dream Fest at the Edmund Town Center from 2:00 to 6:00 PM, which is a cultural fest, which will be food, which will have food vendors, trinkets, auditions, I'm sorry, entertainment. And we are looking for more auditions for those who are looking to come on stage and either sing or dance. And those auditions will be taking place this Saturday from 3:00 to, I'm sorry, from 12:00 to 3:00 PM at the Pearson Community Center. So please come out this Saturday to the Pearson Community Center, which is located at the corner of Cary and Martin Luther King to audition for the performances that will be hosted on the 16th of January, immediately following the parade. And also, there will be a car show, truck show and motorcycle show at the festival. And that will take place on January 16th from 2:00 to 6:00 PM immediately following the 30th Annual Martin Luther King Parade. Also, on January 5th tomorrow, I will be hosting a neighborhood meeting at Doolittle Community Center at 5:30 to talk about a new development that we'll be bringing to the corner of Lake Mead and Martin Luther King. We'll be bringing on a new grocery store and we want to make sure that the community have an opportunity to come out and engage in conversation as to their thoughts as it relates to this new development being proposed at the corner. And I look forward to the community coming out in full support and sharing their thoughts as it relates to this new development coming into the neighborhood. That will conclude the list of items that I have for this meeting and thank you, Mayor. And happy New Year to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. I have two things. The first is to talk about another missing child here in the Las Vegas area. Thanks to the Nevada Child Seekers for providing us with this information. Her name is Jamil Washington. She has a nickname of Nikki. She's 16 years old, a female, five foot three inches tall, 135 pounds, brown eyes, black hair. She's an African-American young woman. She has a scar on her left foot. She's been missing since November 6th of 2011. So we're going on about 60 days. Jamil was last seen in the vicinity of West Owens. She has, as I said, black hair with the top dyed purple. She may be carrying a suitcase and a computer. If you have any information concerning where Nikki might be, you can contact Nevada Child Seekers at 702-458-7009 or Las Vegas Metro Missing Persons Unit at 702-828-3111. And the next, and certainly not least, I would like to ask Jim Carmini to come up to our microphone, please. And let's all pretend that this auditorium is filled with 300 people. Even though it isn't, there's about one and a half million people that are watching KCLV right now and for the next couple of weeks. Jim is our municipal court administrator and I'm very sad and happy to announce and to recognize that tomorrow is Jim's last day with the city of Las Vegas. Jim, your official retirement date is tomorrow and I understand there's a pretty big party scheduled tomorrow afternoon. Jim started with the city of Las Vegas in September of 2001, about 10 and a half years. You've managed a $23.8 million budget. This court handles approximately 190,000 cases a year. We all know, Jim, you've been dedicated to this court for your entire time here in improving a lot of things that go along with this court. I said last time, we have a fine, fine, excellent municipal court and that's in part because they have such a great leader. So tomorrow's your last day after 10 and a half years and there's a million and a half people watching you right now. So tell us, after tomorrow, are you gonna be golfing, traveling, laying on a beach or volunteering with the city of Las Vegas?
Yes, to a few of those.
Okay. Well, congratulations to you and I don't mean to publicly embarrass you, but we really appreciate everything you've done. I've worked with you on a few projects because of a little knowledge I have in your field and it's been a pleasure to work with you. Your successor, Matt Fisk, has huge shoes to fill. you. Your successor, Matt Fisk, has huge shoes to fill, but we're going to miss you, Jim.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I would like to make just a comment to this group. When you asked me to come over here this afternoon, I have to admit, number one, in 10 years with the city, I've never been at city council this late in the session, so I wasn't quite sure why I was coming to this late session, but I really appreciate the acknowledgement. This is a fine group to work with. I am proud and privileged to work with the Las Vegas City Council. I came out of private industry. I always thought of city council as the board of directors, and I know from my work with private industry, there are boards of directors that make what you do difficult, and there are those that lead with integrity, and you're a group that does that. You can count on, when you make a commitment, you can count on the fact that we're going to go that direction. And I can tell you as an operator, that's what we appreciate. So, I'm just proud to have worked with you, city leadership, Betsy, and the people I work with, the city, and of course, the judges. You do have a great municipal court. It's the only court of 70 in the state that contributes positively. We're going to probably commit about 10 million more than we spend this year to the general fund. And that's not without some effort on the part of 100 and some people. You have judges that haven't had a new judge in 15 years. I don't think there's a court in the state that probably hasn't had a judge in the last three or four years. Your judges work very hard. So, thank you for the honor, for the acknowledgement. It's just been a pleasure working with all of you, and Betsy and your team. Thank you.
I would like to add a comment before. On behalf of my husband and my predecessor of 12 years, but knowing you for over some 25, 30, I think.
More than that, Your Honor.
You have always been fair, organized, loyal, hardworking, gentle, and just admired by so many. And I know we all consider you a friend of the city, a friend of this total community, and Oscar, I know, joins me along with my colleagues up here in telling you, you are one heck of a guy, and nobody can fill your shoes. We appreciate everything you've done, and you are a good, good friend and a great man. And thank you very much, and please applaud again. I didn't mean to interrupt the applause.
Thank you.
We'll see you at the party.
Thank you, yes.
And since there's no further business, we will adjourn. Thank you.